Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the City of East Providence. Today, it's Thursday, October 7th, excuse me, October 3rd. May we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we're going to try to cover as much as we can this evening. Hopefully we don't get as late, hopefully it doesn't get as late as it did last night. So with that being said, we're going to just continue from where we left off yesterday. And we're going to start with the canvassing board. Yes, please. Poach the podium. How are you, sir? How are you? How's everything?
Thanks. Members of the council, just for the record, my name is, thank you. I will start again. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Nicholas Oliver, a member of the East Providence Board of Canvassers, and I am here this evening with our canvassing administrator, Leslie Shattuck-Moore. We have before you a proposal in addition to the mayor's proposed budget to increase the staff for the canvassing authority from 2.5 FTEs to 3 FTEs, given that we have increased demand and workload, not just within the city itself, but also federal and state requirements to ensure that we have a secure and efficient elections. As you know, next year, we will have three elections on the 2020 calendar. One is the presidential primary in April, followed by the state primary in September, and then subsequently the general election in November. The members of the Board of Canvassers have provided you with a packet of information to justify the need for the increase for the halftime position. Because of the increased workload, we are currently experiencing a four-hour-per-day productivity loss that is needed to be filled in order to meet the litany of items that are required for us. I wanted to dispel the misnomer that in a non-election year, it is not quiet in the canvassing office. There are several requirements that the current 2.5 FTEs need to complete as far as to make sure that we have a clean list of voters, where there are changes, where residents that move in and out of our community all the time, there are people who also pass away or move into facilities and there are address changes. And as I said before, the state and federal governments require us to continually look through our records to make sure that it is an update as possible and flag those that may not be registered, may not live in our city anymore because they may not have voted in the previous election cycles. One of the things that was asked of us by members of the council in submitting our proposal was some of the projected workload. According to the Board of Elections, we have seen as far as mail ballots are concerned, a significant increase, about 300% projected increase in the amount of mail ballots, and that's due to the proliferation of early voting. In 2012, East Providence saw 234 mail-in ballots. The last presidential election in '16 was 643 mail ballots, and the Rhode Island State Board of Elections is projecting that East Providence will see that number go from 643 to approximately 1,648. So again, a 300% increase. Comparable municipalities to East Providence as far as population and number of voters, East Providence has, on our current voter roll, 34,534 voters, and we have 2.5 FTEs. North Providence has just over 25,000 with three staff members for their canvassing authority. Windsocket with just slightly over 27,000 have three staff. And a larger community, Pawtucket, with almost, for a few shy of 45,000, so 10 more, have three staff. And with, speaking with our counterparts in Pawtucket, they used to have four FTEs for their administration. They did have a staff member that had left, and it was not backfilled. And they are seeing the increased demand and are concerned and are presenting to their own mayor and their council the need to bring that position, number of positions back to four, given the workload that they have. So they have a similar workload, slightly larger population than us, and seeing that three isn't efficient for them and need four, we're struggling with 2.5 to meet the demands for secure and efficient elections. We need to increase that, especially coming into the next election cycle, from 2.5 to 3 FTEs.
So, Mr. Oliver, you had mentioned that you have 2.5. According to the proposal that was presented, there's two employees.
There are, there is an administrator, there is one clerk full-time, and there is one part-time clerk. Given the current demands, that clerk has worked on a number of occasions on overtime in order to fill some of these federal and state demands in the non-election year. So currently, that staff, that office is staffed at 2.5 FTEs.
Do you have a number on the overtime cost?
I'll defer that to the administrator.
The overtime cost, we put at, looks like...
3,000?
Yeah. Forty, 4,500.
Oh, sorry.
I'm not sure what it will actually be for overtime. That includes the custodians, that includes the guys that set up the polls, that includes everybody that gets overtime.
When you say custodians...
The custodians have to be in the building when we have an election. They have to work overtime.
And that comes out of your budget?
That comes out of my budget. For the November election, that is a time off for them, so it comes out of my budget for custodians overtime. The guys that set up the polls the day before, which is at Potellian, is true. That is overtime after 4 o'clock for them to set up. A lot of the polling places, I can't set up until after 4:00. So I increased it by $500 because we have the election, extra election in April.
Ms. Oliver?
Thank you for that information. I also did a little research with Pawtucket today. Do you, would you happen to have their budgets, just like Pawtucket's budget? I'm just, I'm just curious, in comparison to our budget.
Sure. We can inquire about that and try to provide that to you if you find that information helpful.
You want what they pay for canvassing?
Yes.
I've got that. Pawtucket, Pawtucket's 2020 budget for canvassing is $365,639.
So that's 104,000 more than what we're proposing for East Providence.
And Cranston's is 318,924. Both cities that are, you know, have a few more voters than we do, as you pointed out, Mr. Oliver, but I would say that, you know, of comparable size.
Yeah. Thank you for that. That's, that actually is helpful in trying to figure out what is reasonable, right? The 34,534 that was sent, is that in addition to the 261? Let me rephrase that. Is that in addition to the 101 proposed salaries?
Yeah, that's, I'm trying to understand your question. I think you're mixing numbers here. The 34,534 is the number of registered voters as of today's roll.
A dollar amount. So what would be the increase in the salary by adding, making that part-time?
I'll defer that to Malcolm. I'm not sure what that would be.
And the reason why we're deferring to that is, is that those, that additional position would be subject to the collective bargaining unit in which that position is housed.
So is that right now, it's not, it's not budgeted for that part-timer to be a full-timer?
The mayor had proposed to the city council that that position, the number of positions for that office remain as it currently stands today at 2.5 FTEs. The Board of Canvassers unanimously is recommending to the council to increase that above the mayor's recommendation from 2.5 FTEs to 3.0 FTEs, essentially taking our part-time person to full-time status.
So that part-time, so that part-time line item would essentially disappear because at that, now you would not need a part-time person.
Correct.
What's the, what's the base salary, just to get an idea of what one of the full-timers are making, for example?
She's a high-stepping, please?
She is. She's had a high step increase, so I'm not, maybe Malcolm has that number?
Are you talking about your current clerk, you mean?
Yes.
She's had a high step increase?
Yeah.
So you can't compare her salary currently to what...
You'd get a ballpark.
55 to 60 is the top, so if she came in at the same position as the, as the lower person in the office.
Well, she wouldn't come in at the same because she's not at a high step. She'd be coming in as a...
She would come in at a lower step, but that step acts as, I would, 55 to 60. I don't have the steps in front of me. This position is starting at step 1.
We show a canvassing clerk at 41,116. That's one of...
That would be the current full-time clerk.
Right.
It's one admin, the 2.5 reflect one administrator, Administrator Shattuck-Moore, one clerk that's full-time, and then the other is the 0.5 FTE.
The administrator is 56,320. The one clerk is 41, so another clerk would be somewhat less than 40, I assume.
Yeah, correct. It would be step 1 position in the collective bargaining scheme.
While we're discussing salaries, would we still need this line item for special election, $15,000? There's not going to be a special election, right?
That is up to you, the members of the council.
So that could come out, right? We voted to not have a special election, and I don't think there will be one in this budget year. So that line of... Let's take it right down. 54,000 special elections, $15,000, we can strike that.
So putting in the full-time position, you can take out the part-time line as, Mr. Oliver?
So doing some quick math, based on the... Be like a wash. Yeah. So doing some quick math, and based on the step 1 pay, I guess you could say, it's, which is around $41,000, is that fair to say? Well, it'd be less than that. Well, let's just say 41. You could say 41. And taking away the 15,000 from the part-timer, the salary increase is really 26,000, you know, not including the...
Medical, longevity pensions.
That type of stuff, but it's an increase in salaries of 26,000 if that part-time line item is eliminated. So there wouldn't be a need for that. Plus the bottom line, we should reflect the taking out of the 15,000 for special election. Should have to do some math to see what the new bottom line would be.
If I'm not mistaken, right now, it calls for 28,000, almost $29,000 in your increase for your budget overall, regardless of where it comes from pay or otherwise, okay? If you remove the 15,000 in itself, it would take you down to 13,000. That's not including anything else if you remove there, so not much of an increase, the way I look at it. And I just want clarification. You, so you said you wanted three full-timers. Would that also include the part-time as well, or you are taking the part-time?
Taking that part-time position.
So essentially, it would be from two employees to three employees, not two and a half to three and a half. Am I correct?
Currently, like I said, there are three employees. It is technically 2.5 full-time equivalents, FTEs. The intent of the Board of Canvassers is to elevate that part-time position to a full-time position.
So therefore, which, because you got two employees, well, when I say 2.5, it looks like two full-timers and one part-time.
That is correct.
And that part-time's going to become a full-time.
Correct.
So you'll have three, you'll have three full-timers, not 3.5 and no part-time.
Correct.
Okay.
But your part-time doesn't get benefits, so that's...
There's a difference.
But I was under the impression, I just want to clarify, because they kept saying from 2.5 to 3.5, however...
No, no, no. 2.5, just to correct you, Mr. President, 2.5 to 3.0 full-time equivalent.
Yes, okay. That, okay. I'm good.
Can I just interject also, just to clarify this, because I'm not entirely sure what the law would be on this, and I'd have to have our solicitor look into it. This is a collective bargaining position, so we'd have to follow whatever collective bargaining procedures there are into filling a position. So that would require going out to bid first for any other collective bargaining members who may want to bid into it. So it's not guaranteed that this part-time person will get the job, just so you understand that. I just wanted to clarify.
For the record, I don't believe that I projected as such. I believe that I did state that it is the intent of the Board of Canvassers to elevate the position. There was nothing included in my remarks to say about the current occupant in the part-time position. That is a decision that needs to be made through the Board of Canvassers. The Board of Canvassers is the employer technically, and that we, I did inquire with the administrator this afternoon as to what the procedure and precedent has been. Since it's an odd position, it is a city employee, although not technically under the city infrastructure. The employee-er of record for the, those that occupy, or employees of that office, is not technically the city. It is the Board of Canvassers under state statute. But we will follow the collective bargaining agreement because it is a collective bargaining position or unionized position.
So essentially, I don't have any problems with what we have listed on...
Okay. I just, and the councilman had mentioned benefits. I'm looking at a total package of about 74,000. So if you reduce a step, it would be 65, maybe somewhere in that ballpark.
You're talking salary and benefits?
And benefit, yes. Total cost for the employee.
That would have yearly increases, steps. I have a quick question. So we have projected now 34,000 voters, is that correct, thereabouts? How many voted in 2018? Out of registered voters?
I don't know. I can get that to you.
Okay. And does the state pay for any of the Board of Canvassers? Do they, Board of Elections, are there any contribution from the state towards our elections? So the, those, so like the poll workers, that's coming out of this?
That's our, yeah. The municipality is responsible for conducting their own elections, including the expenses for conducting a state or a federal election.
So is that where purchased professional services come in?
Correct.
Okay. Because I noticed that there was a, you know, a $12,000 increase in that from last year. Is that because of the added election?
Correct.
Correct.
And is there, is there a state statute that requires a certain amount of workers at each polling?
Yes, yes.
No matter how large that precinct is?
We add more in the November election, but in the regular primary election, it's mandated that you have six.
At each precinct?
It's a warden, a clerk, and four supervisors. I'm sorry. It's a warden, a clerk, and four supervisors. It's mandated.
Okay.
And Councilwoman, just so you know, the board and the administrator try to conserve the city's resources. So for the presidential primary, we are only planning to open four polling places on April 28th. I believe that is the correct date for the primary, yeah. One in each ward throughout the city. The city, of course, as you know, is four wards. Otherwise, we have 18 polling locations that we must operate through the statewide and then the general election, September and November respectively.
Is that, Ms. Oliver, is that why the increase in the advertising and printing, with that, this upcoming presidential election?
Those are state requirements.
Okay. Well, based on what I found out today, I was under the impression that the Board of Canvassing, like, pretty much like everyone else, what do they do between elections? And apparently, they do a lot. And I wasn't aware of that until I did a little research today. And based on that, removing the 15,000 from that line item, and by increasing that position to 20, it would essentially be 26,000 added to the salaries. It's my opinion that we should actually do that. And the increase would actually go from 261 to 272 in this budget request. So it'll be, it'll be a small increase, and I know that the medical and stuff has all contributed in there at some point.
Well, it would be, it would be initial, it would be right away. So if, if it was a family plan or a single plan, and that's what they opted for, then it would, so essentially, it'd be 65,000 increase, because we'd have to account, we'd have to allot for that increase, much like when we did planning and economics, those two positions that are not vacant, they accounted for being two hired family medical insurances, and that's why that number was high, because they were anticipating that whoever's hired is going to require those benefits. Now, whether they take it or not is different, but I think, you know, best-case scenario, you have to allot for the most and hope for the least. So I'm not...
So in that case, it would be 311.
May I do all that stuff then? Sounds like the council's kind of headed in this direction. Can I suggest that we maybe tighten up a few more of these lines? Consider this. I would presume that if we are going from a part-time position to a full-time position, then we can count on a decrease in overtime need. And when I look at overtime expenditures, historically, I see that it's never really broken 4,000. Looking at 3,300, 3,600, 3,900 this year.
Bring it down.
Can I propose that we reduce that by $1,000 to $3,500?
Board and commissions, no need to cut you off, Councilman, but if we're looking at lines, what are board and commission payments for? What's that line item about?
Do you mind if I address that?
Yeah, of course. Whoever knows the answer is perfectly fine with me.
So the three members of the Board of Canvassers receive a stipend for their services, primarily because we have travel expenses for monitoring each of the 18 polling locations. Multiply that by two, plus the additional four. We travel throughout the city throughout each of those three election cycles.
So is that your gas bill?
Essentially, our gas, if there are other expenses that are otherwise not reimbursable, it's something that we incur. And I believe all three receive the same stipend. The chairman doesn't get more. Well, okay. Sorry, Mr. President.
So it's an overall stipend?
Yeah, I'm good.
A thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. I'm good with reducing overtime from 3,500 to 40, from 4,500 to 3,500, x 3,500, and adding the additional employee. Everything else is pretty much tight.
Advertising and printing line? I see that spiked one year in '18, but is that, is that, does it spike now? Never mind. So that spike on election years, or is that what's going on, or?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you make...
The advertising and printing line? '17, we spent $394. '18, we spent $6,500. '19, we're down to about $2,800, and we've got $2,100 in the budget. Oh, no, sorry, we got $6,500 in the budget, pardon me. What's the reason for the jump? We went from a budget last year of 1,000 to a budget this year of 6,500.
In 2017, I'm looking at it, was probably the special election that we had for the charter amendment?
Through the chair?
Please.
I'm pulling it up, and every other year, when you have an election, it looks like there is a spike. In '15, it was $393. In '16, it was $7,500. In '17, it was $3,900. In '18, it was $6,500. So far this year, it's maybe 2,000, so there'll be another spike next year.
So for the special election in '17, it was 3,000, what? What was the numbers? I'm sorry, Malcolm.
In '15 and '17, it was $400.
Oh.
$393, to be exact, but $400. And the off-years, it was $7,500 and $6,500. So on the even years, when you have elections, it's $6,000, $7,000. The off-year, it's 500 bucks.
What is the advertising? What are you advertising? Polling places?
The advertising and printing is also, we have developed into the e-poll pads, which you see where you put your license in. But the state mandates that we also have to print the poll books, because if the polling place goes down, we still have to be able to get these voters through. So we still have to print and advertise these poll books that they do. And then printing is through the post. I do the reporter. I do online, and basically, that's it, pretty much, as the city clerk does.
Around 6,500 every two years?
Even year.
Yeah.
I spoke my lines.
I'm good.
Yeah, I don't have anything else?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. So what are the general census here from the council? We're going to eliminate the part-time, pay from 15,000 to zero, reduce the overtime from 4,500 to 3,500, and feel free to jump in anytime if I'm not on the same page as you all. Special election, we're going to eliminate the 15,000 to make that zero, and we're going to add another employee.
Well, increase from half to a full, so from 2.5 to 3.0. Which would be about 25,000 in the regular salaries line item.
And overall, I'm tracking about 43 increase, right? Based on the numbers you gave me for the salaries, I mean, the benefits too. Yeah. So we would basically increase that budget approximately 43K. I mean, Malcolm, we'll have to go through and see exactly how that comes out in Medicaid.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Want to jump right into finance, which is the next one?
Sure.
Considering that the director will not be present here tomorrow evening...
Who's going to take the notes?
Paul Luba. Paul Luba.
Paul, great.
Yeah, that's true, too. All right. So Malcolm, what we'll do is we'll hold off for yours right now. We'll do it tonight. We'll take care of you tonight, knowing that you're not going to be here. In an event that a department head does want to leave, we can move on over to... What's, what would be the next one? We jumped around so much here.
Fire, I believe.
Is police here?
Fires.
Fires here?
Fire and Mike.
Okay, one fire. Everybody prepared?
Yeah.
Chief? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm acting chief blunt quick. East Providence Fire.
So that's going to take us to page 89?
Thank you.
In the budget book? Section 750. Does anyone like to...
I can start if you'd like.
Sure. Please.
So the first...
So the first, I understand the increase in salaries, that's contractual, correct, chief?
Yes, sir.
So then if you move down to the detail pay, is that detail pay that, like a vendor requests a firefighter to be in a tent, for example?
Yes, specific details are paid by the vendor.
Is there an administration fee when that detail is processed?
There is no administration fee.
But that detail, that thirty thousand dollars, it's not an expense to fire department? It's just that they pay through the fire department?
That's correct.
So wouldn't that be, and we're going to have the same issue too with police, the same questions. Wouldn't that essentially, that shouldn't even be a line item, basically? It's not an expense.
Well, there are other details that we do have that the city actually pays for.
But there is a revenue side to that expense, if I'm not mistaken, right? There is a revenue side to that expense.
There is a revenue side to it.
So Malcolm, so the expense in this particular line item here of thirty thousand dollars in detail?
Yes.
What was the revenue size that was brought in? How much was brought in for that?
That we'd have to get from the chief's office. I mean, we track it in total, and I think you see on the department, you've got fire, but that's mainly rescue.
Okay.
That absolutely needs to be in the budget. It really does. It just does. I mean, we can't make decisions on an expenditure without knowing what the revenue is.
I agree.
So the revenue sheet that we received tonight, Malcolm, it talks about fire, year-to-date, ninety-five thousand. There's an estimated year-end of one hundred and fourteen thousand. So that's our best estimate of revenue in total fire, not just details.
Right. If you look below it, you've got fire rescue billing for two point five million, and that's mainly the rescue billing. All the other minor ones for permits and reviews comes to about one fourteen. I do believe that they have that. One of the council members had asked me for the police breakdown, and I called over to the police department, and they sent me over an Excel spreadsheet that had a list of all of the breakdown of the revenues. It's just when the money comes over, it's in one bag, and when it comes into the system, it only goes into one account. And so we can get that. We just don't have it readily available through the system.
So the estimated one fourteen would include detail?
Yes.
So then whatever you would cut in the expenditure of detail, you would also cut from that corresponding line, from that one fourteen? So it would balance out.
Mm-hmm.
But that's presuming that there's not more details coming in that's under that line, which we can't tell.
So there's basically nothing that we can do with that line item?
I don't think that there's anything that we can knowledgeably do with that line item. I mean, we can make it whatever we want, but I can't come up with a good reason for making it a different number.
So my question will take us right down the list to purchase of professional services. As we can see, it's almost three hundred thousand dollars. What does the fire department use that professional services for?
Professional services are for ten-twenty-one classes that are prerequisites for promotional exams. There's other instructor certifications, ten-forty-one class, that's another prerequisite.
What's a ten-twenty-one?
A ten-twenty-one is an officer development class. And in order to take a captain's test, you have to have that certification.
Okay. So these are all certifications across the fire department, almost three hundred thousand dollars for certification?
Well, it happens that we have to backfill the positions while the student goes to school.
Wouldn't that come in either?
Overtime.
Overtime? Would that come in in overtime?
So council members, just take a look at the screen behind you. The system is broken down. So the professional services also includes rescue billing that gets paid out of that account to collect the billing on rescue runs that we make. Ladder testing is required, pump testing is required, outside evaluations, promotional exam for battalion chiefs, promotional exam.
So when we go into exams, then, what would be the professional development, seeing that the exams are going to be under professional services? So where would, what would come on the professional development? I would think that.
You can go check that. Let me see what we have on the professional development. Professional development, we have an officers' course, class instructor course, miscellaneous training courses throughout the year, training academy supplies, online learning platforms to get MCP certification, new, I can't say that word.
Regent scope.
So training. So training, yes, training.
So there's two different lines. The purchase of professional services is required mandated services that the fire department needs to contract out to be able to conduct their day-to-day operations. And then your professional development is more along the lines of trainings that you need to keep people certified and properly trained if you're going to be saving people's lives.
And some of those line items are contractual.
I think we should start from the top on this one.
Yeah, I do, too.
So chief, the overtime budget, right, three point three-five-eight, okay? I understand that there's, is it eleven openings at the moment? There's a lot of?
Right now, we have ten vacancies.
How many?
Ten vacancies.
And one lieutenant vacancy open?
One lieutenant vacancy and one captain vacancy that's going to be coming any day now.
Okay. So is there an anticipated timeframe as to when that will be filled? Is there another fire academy in?
It's going to be filled when we run the new academy.
Okay.
When's that academy start?
We're projected it to start sometime in March of twenty.
Twenty-twenty?
Yes.
March of twenty-twenty?
Yes. We're betting now. We're both there advertising at this moment.
And how long have those vacancies? How long has it been with that amount of vacancies?
Oh, it fluctuates. We've gone from five to six and all the way up to ten.
So last fiscal, yeah, so last fiscal year, how many vacancies? Is it the same as what it is now, the ten?
Right now, it's ten.
Was it like that last year?
Last year, it wasn't ten. It was, I'm not sure exactly what it was, but there's always vacancies in the fire department.
So is there a reason why an academy wasn't run for this year?
I'm not sure. It just, it wasn't in the budget.
It wasn't budgeted.
As a matter of fact, I would like to get that academy pushed up to about eighteen because we're anticipating some retirements.
It's just that, my point, it's that if we have the same amount of vacancies in the previous year, why the increase of three fifty-eight projected? That will be needed for overtime in the next fiscal year.
It's not only for salaries, it's for the training.
All right. So with that said, with the training, as we were confused as to the professional, the purchase of professional services, that two ninety, and then also the professional development, you know, that's also for training.
That's correct.
But it's also, but it's coming out of the, you're saying that the overtime is three fifty-eight.
So we anticipate an increase in overtime due to the fact that we're running an academy this year. And because we're running an academy, we have to pay the personnel who do the training overtime. So there's an overtime cost there. Also, if I'm correct, Malcolm, if I'm wrong, let me know. When we budgeted for some of these vacant positions, we budgeted with the idea that we understand that they're not going to be coming online for a full fiscal year. So we didn't budget a full position on those particular positions. Is that correct, Malcolm?
That is correct.
Okay. And also, what that means is while these vacancies and while they're going through the training and through the academy, you still need to backfill these vacancies with overtime positions. In addition, the vacancies that we are currently faced with have increased over last year because we've had some recent retirements that people have retired. So that has definitely increased over last year.
So why would it be overtime for training?
Well, we're using our members to do the training.
But wouldn't that be part of their job description or during a regular time that they'd, excuse me?
They get pulled off the truck, they get detailed into the division of training, and we have to backfill that position.
Oh, so you don't have trainers, guys who train?
Correct. We have a captain and a lieutenant in the training division. They still have to train the rest of the job. And when we have an academy, we'll pull about eight or nine firefighters, officers, officers off the line into the division of training, and they'll do the instruction.
So did we run an academy in seventeen?
I believe so. I think we had a class.
Yes, we did.
And the overtime bill that year was two point eight million. And did we run an academy in eighteen?
No.
No academy in eighteen, and we didn't run, we haven't run one in nineteen.
We're going to be running one in twenty-twenty.
So we said the academy was not budgeted last year. Under what line is the academy budgeted here?
Malcolm?
You have to give me a second to look.
Okay.
To look through that to find that.
Did you, I'm just asking our folks from the council that ran the council last year, do you remember, do you recall talking about an academy at all during last year's budget? I sat in a queue, I didn't remember it coming out.
Eighty-six thousand dollars.
No, I don't recall. They don't really, we don't really recall, there never really is a discussion about academies when it comes to the budget.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like that's the thing that the council would cut.
Right, right.
No, we wouldn't cut it, especially if.
I mean, whatever the need is in the department, the department knows their need. So if they need to run an academy because they're down, they're manning.
Right, you guys are going to pay for that, right. I heard you guys banging on that forever.
Right.
So if you look on the overtime line, it's itemized for what the overtime, what we feel the overtime should be. So it kind of lays out all the different types of things that we need to do. So there's mandatory boat training, there's hazmat refresher course, and there's also in there for the thirty-fourth academy, budgeted eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars to pay for the overtime of the personnel who will be involved in training the officers.
That's correct.
So the ten-twenty-one and ten-forty, is that, are we under professional?
Over time.
So we're paying for their class, and while they're in class, we're paying overtime?
To the members backfilling at the fire hose.
Bless you.
God bless.
So they're training while they're on duty?
That's correct.
And how many hours of training need to be completed for each firefighter?
There's going to be twenty weeks of training for the academy.
I'm talking about just standard, the standard training.
That's for new guys, I'm talking about for guys on the force.
The ten-twenty-one, ten-forty-one class, I believe it's forty hours.
Per firefighter?
Per firefighter.
And that's an annual thing that they're doing, you do?
It becomes an annual, depending on promotional exams and when the class is advertised. And most of the time, they're taking these classes down in South County. They're traveling.
How long is the certification for?
It's forever.
So you get certified once?
Once you receive the ten-forty-one.
Right.
You have that certificate.
You don't have to keep going for recertification?
No, no.
And how many firefighters do we have this year that we'll need to train?
Right now, we're trying to put a class together. We're trying to actually do it in East Providence. We want to host a ten-twenty-one, ten-forty-one class. The classes are about fifteen to eighteen students.
And that won't be all of our folks? That will be folks from other, these two?
Other fire departments also, but East Providence will have preference.
But how many of ours actually need to get that certification right now? How many don't have the certification?
I'm not sure. It's the individual, it's not mandatory for them to have that.
Right.
But if they want to take the captain's exam, they have to get the ten-twenty-one. No, not to get the ten-twenty-one, you have to get the ten-forty-one. It's a prerequisite.
Chief, I want to just jump off a little bit and ask you whether or not a rescue for Ward One has been inclusive to this budget?
No, it hasn't. If you want to give me a million bucks, I'll put a.
Well, I don't actually look at it, additional million bucks. I look at it from the study that was done, not last August, but the August prior to that, for the amount of runs that went out, that the guys who worked on that rescue, the billing exceeded the amount that we had actually paid for salaries.
Yes.
So I don't see how we would need an additional million dollars when the billing will pay for those guys to be on that rescue.
We have all the numbers. I don't have them here.
I have them also because I went through it last year with the former chief. Unfortunately, I just didn't think we were doing fire this evening, and I didn't bring it with me. However, I do have that, and I have all the runs that we've had as well. And the runs in that particular rescue has doubled in the Rufford area. I can understand at one point in time, we did not need a rescue. The numbers were extremely low, but since then, those numbers have grown substantially.
Absolutely, and I agree with you.
I mean, there may be runs into Rufford, but you're not losing that revenue right now. It's being met by one of your rescues from another station. When we actually looked, I remember we looked at this last year. When we looked last year and how much, you have to say, okay, how much revenue am I losing to Pawtucket or some other surrounding town or city? It's really not that much. It's probably in the seventy, eighty thousand dollar range. Even though, you know, there's a lot of runs in Rufford, you're meeting it. You're meeting it from one of your other rescues. You're not losing it to an outside community.
But still, my point is that the cost is not, the cost may be a million dollars for the year, but the trial run that they experimented with out of that rescue, out of that station, the billing exceeded the amount for the guys that were being paid on that rescue.
Right, but you're still getting that billing. It's just coming from another station. So it's not additional billing that you'd be picking up. You know, you'd be paying a million dollars, you know, for the additional rescue, and you probably pick up maybe seventy to eighty thousand dollars in new revenue.
As long as it exceeds the billing.
It's not.
I'm at the overtime.
It's not going to exceed the overtime or the cost. You're picking up seventy, you're losing a million, so.
I'm going to beg to differ with you because of the numbers that I went over with the former chief, doesn't speak to that.
In that case, Pawtucket would be picking up a million dollars, and it's not.
Well, I don't know what Pawtucket is picking up.
Right.
And I don't care what Pawtucket is picking up.
I know, but you're getting the revenue, it's just coming from another station. It may be coming a little longer than it comes to.
When you say it's coming from another, what revenues are we getting from another station?
I mean, someone's meeting the rescue run now.
Yeah, and in most cases, it's an apparatus. It's a fire truck, it's a fire engine or a ladder.
So you're still getting that billing. The fire truck is billing it, or the rescue from another station is billing it. You're not losing that revenue.
So then, what I don't understand is what's the issue with having a rescue in Rufford?
Quicker and saving, you know, the money that you're losing to Pawtucket, which is probably eighty, ninety thousand.
And seek bank.
Mr. President, well, that was something I wanted to. My numbers don't reflect that. From when I went over with the former chief last year, he and I sat down, and we went over all the runs, and I have all the numbers from last year, and the billings that went out as well.
I mean, we can provide that.
Well, I have it also. I already have it, so.
I just remembered that it was a ten-hour up each day. It wasn't a twenty-four hour, seven days a week. This was a ten-hour up each day, five days a week. We didn't do it on the.
Yeah, so I'm thinking if it was even longer, then the billing would be even higher because there'll be more runs for that rescue.
Right, but you're.
So they won't have to call from another station.
Right, but the station is picking it up. The other station's picking it up.
But there's a difference between a ladder truck versus a rescue.
Not in billing.
Well, I'm not talking about billing. I could care less about the billing, to be honest. I'm thinking about the resident who's looking for the rescue and not the engine.
That's a totally different argument.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
That's a different argument, that's.
But that's the whole point of having, we're not asking for a ladder truck, we're asking for a rescue, and a rescue has a specific need that it meets in a community.
Right, and it'll cost you.
And that's, I think, what the councilmen.
It'll cost you an additional million dollars, and your additional revenue is going to be in the.
I don't believe it's going. I don't, I don't believe it's gonna cost us an extra million dollars, I believe that that money could be paid through overtime, and it could be compensated through the billings that that rescue run makes.
Okay, let's say that rescue run does a million dollars in billing, okay? Let's say.
There's, there's your million dollars.
Right, but then the rescue runs from the other stations will be nine hundred dollars less. Because you're, you're, you're sending a rescue out, or, or a truck out right now for, for those runs, you're not saying, okay, we're not.
But that analogy, you can use the same thing and say, then if that's the case, then we won't need another rescue in one of the other wards, right?
No.
Why?
Because, I mean, you have, you, you know, you, there's only one station that doesn't have a rescue, right? So if something happens in Rufford, one of your other stations most likely is going to meet that rescue run, and they're gonna bill for it.
If they're not on another run.
And the domino effect is, from what I understand, okay?
Yeah.
That if it's, if the central rescue is not in, they go to the next station, am I correct?
Yep.
And so forth and so on, before we go outside.
Right.
Okay, so if we have a rescue, it can go right directly to?
Then your, Rufford's gonna pick it up, the other station.
But we're also gonna bill for it.
Yeah, but the other station is billing for it now. You're not losing the revenue, except if you're losing it to Pawtucket, or, or, or some, or, yeah, CCON.
I'd be interested in seeing what the resident.
Yeah, I gotta see that, because I, I have my own numbers that contradict what you're saying.
We went through this last year with, with the, the former chief, and he came up with a number that, what, what are we losing in revenue, and it was, you know, it's.
And then he and I, after that, sat down, and we talked about it, and when, when we looked at the total, when we looked at the total package financially, the billings justified the amount of money that we were paying out for the guys to man that rescue.
So are, are you losing a million dollars in rescue to Pawtucket?
I wouldn't believe so, but, but what we really should do here is wait for my EMS director, he has a presentation, he has all the numbers, he has the average rescue run, which I believe was three point three runs for that particular rescue.
And where does that fall in relation to the other part of the city?
Excuse me?
And where does that fall in relation to the other part of the city, the amount of runs?
It actually, it worked out, but we do have numbers for the council, and we would like to give a presentation, you know, to give you all the numbers that.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, yeah, I'm, because I, I just, from my conversation, as I said early on, with the former chief, those billings justified that rescue being there.
Okay.
Without, without increasing the budget by a million dollars.
So in that case, there would have to be one million dollars of new money that you're losing.
No, no, not necessarily.
Or else. Yeah, because you're getting it right now. But anyways, that's.
So additionally to, you know, all the numbers, the, the issue is time and quality of service, and that's a decision we have to make. Let me ask you, has the numbers increased from last year to this year in that partic?
Absolutely.
Okay, so over the years. The numbers of calls? The number of calls have increased dramatically, dramatically.
Absolutely.
At one point in time, when we first had this discussion, when I first got on, it didn't warrant a conversation, because the numbers were so low for the amount of runs, that it didn't justify having a rescue there. Over the years, those numbers have grown substantially. As of last year, when I went over those numbers, and unfortunately, I was unaware that we were gonna have this discussion, because it was, it was planned for tomorrow, being Friday, having this discussion for, for your department here. So I didn't bring my, I didn't bring my paper and all the information that I have through the conversation I had with former chief, Osmi, Osmeni, Osmenia.
Osmenia.
Osmen.
I know.
But needless to say, those, those, those calls, those runs have increased substantially.
And as you're acting, I want that fourth rescue, we need it, I understand.
Yeah, and that's what the chief said also.
Absolutely, but, but it's, it's gonna cost extra.
But I'm saying that it could come out of overtime, and billing will pay for that overtime.
Can I ask a question about purchasing this, this rescue? The million is for a new one, I assume? I, I don't know if that's the number to buy a new one.
We're gonna get a new rescue, but we're gonna not put one in, in Ward one, and we're gonna have one, and we're gonna have one, right, on, on call.
Right, you gotta go to the other rescues that actually need to be.
Do we have any rescues in reserve currently? How many?
We have three.
Three in reserve, three active.
Yes.
We want a new one.
Very stocked.
And we can't get it in.
Can I, can I make a recommendation?
I really don't wanna spend too much time on this, let's, yeah, do we need a new one?
I don't think we need a new one.
This is gonna take up way too much time.
Mr. President, are we meeting tomorrow?
Yes.
Continue, okay, can we try to get those numbers by tomorrow?
Absolutely.
All right, and then we can bring them to you, so you can.
So let's, sure.
I think, you know, if, if we could put another rescue, or fifth rescue, I'd be happy to do that, as long as we can, I know it's a fourth, but I'd rather put, if I could put a fourth, or fifth, or sixth rescue, and do it, you know, fiscally responsibly, then I'd do that. I think the more rescues you have out there, the, the better chance you have of getting help to people, so.
Right, but I, when I look at, well, in excess of just about a million dollar increase in the budget, I mean, last question.
That's where we could put a, that's where we could put a rescue.
Acting chief, my last question is, is it also a staffing issue? If we, if you had the rescue tomorrow, would you then have to, could you use it?
Yes.
Or is there a minimum staffing, or something that would?
Well, right now, minimum twenty-six. If you add the fourth rescue, would have to be negotiated.
Now, do quick math, assuming that, you know, just taking a median salary, doing an hourly calculation, assuming it's time and a half, that comes out, to me, to, to more than ten thousand hours of additional overtime over what was expended last year, which would be about a hundred and nine additional, additional overtime hours for every firefighter on the force. I, I can't see how that makes sense, I don't know how, I can't, no matter how many classes you run, I can't see how.
In those earlier years, we put forty-one trainees through, and now we're, we have retirements, and the retirements are, are making the overtime budget go up.
But also, if you were putting forty-one through in previous years, you would have also had to have backfilled those positions while you were putting those through.
During the training, during the training.
Certainly, right, so while they were training at that high level, which is a much higher level than previous years.
Correct.
Then that should have been reflected in a higher overtime budget, and the overtime budget didn't go up to this level at any time in any of those years.
I'm gonna bring that up. So there's a couple of, of points, as far as the new class goes, the instructor's cost is eighty-six thousand, the EMT cardiac class relief for the thirty-fourth academy, so once they come on, they actually go to EMT cardiac school, so we have to backfill them for those, that's another fifty-four thousand, that's just that class alone, construct, uh, contractually, paramedic, three hundred dollars times four employees, paramedic licensing, they need to get three hundred hours of continuing education units in order to keep their licenses, so that is contractual, ten twenty-one, ten forty-one instructor is ninety-two thousand dollars, and that is contractual, because it's actually in the collective bargaining agreement, so anybody who takes fire officer, they also have to take ten forty-one, which is fire instructor. Technical rescue training, hazmat refresher training, and boat training, all of those are new, those were surpassed last year, they were moved out of the budget, they were moved the year before, we've been trying to get that training back.
Mm-hmm.
We get limited amount of funds from OSBA through REMA to do that training, but it has not been consistent or enough. Same thing with hazmat, our hazmat money has been reduced from the DHS Homeland Security Grant through REMA, from originally, we were getting seventy thousand a year for training, all the way down to twenty-five, so we're pretty much playing catch-up to keep everybody certified.
Which, training's important, agree a hundred percent, but are we really going to do ten thousand hours of additional training this year?
I wouldn't say it's ten thousand hours, if you look at, so, but let's take boat training alone, it's forty hours times ten employees.
Okay.
That's ten employees who are considered what we call red, we have red, yellow, and greens for our certification and capabilities.
Yep.
The next one is twenty hours, twenty employees, those are the yellows, to bring them up to green, and to keep the greens where they need to be, it's twenty hours times twenty employees, I'm sorry, forty hours times.
Twenty.
Yeah, twenty hours times twenty employees. Hazmat refresher training, we're required to do a minimum of forty hours a year, not to mention special facilities and everything else that we have in the city, that's forty hours times thirty employees. And technical rescue training, we usually do four, eight-hour days, or four, ten, actually, we figure it as four, ten-hour days, there's actually six disciplines they have to refresh every year, and we squeeze off six disciplines within four trainings. So these numbers, we've already reduced as much as we can, in order to just get this minimum training done. Everything else in here is, is contractual, or has to do with the, the new training academy. So while three hundred thousand dollars looks extravagant, it's really not when you break it down by the numbers.
I'd like to see those numbers in writing, so I can do that math, that's a lot of math.
Comes out to twenty-four hundred hours.
That's, that's an eighteen percent increase, twenty-four hundred hours, which is well short of ten thousand.
So that, those numbers that you're suggesting, when you're going from yellow to green, how many currently are at those levels that are in the fire department?
I think it's thirty. So right now, I believe we have.
Thirty-one on the boat.
We have thirty-one people on the boat.
Different levels.
Which boat?
Marine three.
Marine three, so we're part of the state task force. We built, we actually built all four boats together with a project about nine years ago, with grant funding.
So when are they out on the boat?
They get sent out whenever an emergency is called, there's actually task forces throughout Navarri against the bay, and all the assets get called out through metro control out of Creighton, usually called out by the coast guard.
We were in Fall River just the other night for a boating accident, two people passed away, so they, we're.
And we get billed from, do we receive revenue for that, or we, as a city, are paying for our firefighters to go help?
We are, we are part of a metro region, we, we run, so instead of having, we have four assets that collectively can provide fire protection, search and rescue, but it's part of the mutual aid agreement.
And then some of these others, you mentioned about the ten twenty-one and ten forty-one officer classifications, those that you've, the amount that you've budgeted for, those are optional, those aren't obligated contractually to go into those classes, those are, if a firefighter would like to advance their career, they can, correct?
Correct.
Correct. And how many have you asked?
They have to get out of their pocket to get into that class, if, if it's not.
Right.
That dollar amount is based on the number of people who haven't taken the class yet, who contractually could ask for it.
And what was that amount? Right, and what's that amount?
Ninety-two thousand.
How many, how many employees?
I don't have that on there.
But it's safe to say that all those who are eligible will likely not take that in one fiscal year?
We actually are gonna run, we're actually running one here in the city shortly, when is that, June?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the one you're talking about, that we're hosting. Are we receiving any revenue from that, too?
No.
If other cities are coming, other firefighters?
It goes through the fire academy in, in Exeter, the state fire academy.
So they, so we pay them, and we just host it as a location?
Right.
Okay.
So this budget's increased by nine hundred and seven thousand, five thirty-five, from the, from the previous year. And that's my opinion that some of these items should be reduced, the unnecessary items. I understand we can't do anything contractually with the salaries for some of these other items, such as the, that overtime budget, that's the three fifty-eight, that's a lot, the trainings that were just mentioned adds up to twenty-four hundred hours, my calculations are correct.
That ten thousand hours, was that calculated at ten thousand, did that, did that add up to ten thousand, or that's just a projected? So if you were looking at, the hazmat refresher is forty hours for thirty, thirty employees, it's all broken down by each, each discipline. So boat training, forties, forty hours for ten, twenty for twenty, thirty for forty for hazmat, and tech rescue is forty hours for thirty.
Can you summarize, in, in a summary form, why we're almost a million dollars more than last year, as opposed to just, you know, not looking at every line item, but in a summary, can someone say, what is the, the largest cause for that?
I would say vacancies, most of the vacancies.
So it's due to vacancies and overtime and?
Two hours per week for ten vacancies at, at the time right now, and it's gonna be projected even more.
Do you have a class coming up?
We have a class.
It's been advertised now.
It's been advertised.
Okay.
It's March of twenty twenty is the projected time that it's going to start, and then another twenty weeks after that.
Another class.
Past the summer, when most of the vacations are recurring.
I thought I heard some, Adam, sorry, I don't know the battalion chief's name.
This is Battalion Chief Carey.
I'm sorry, I could read the battalion chief, but that's all I knew.
Special operations chief.
In the academy, isn't it, so you mentioned that there's twelve, or you've cut it down to eleven?
It's been cut down to eleven.
Eleven, so eleven that we're anticipating will start in March of twenty twenty? Okay.
For the training school, and then another twenty weeks of training, and then they actually go on to the.
Then they'll come on as probationary firefighters.
Right, so I know, I, isn't it in your language, contractually, or when you put it out for advertisement, and I think this is in most municipalities, that they already come with their EMT as a, as a prerequisite, or something that draws people so that the city doesn't have to have that added expense?
They have to have their EMT basic, but then, contractually, they have to be, they have to be sent to cardiac class, which is, how many hours is that?
Seven.
It's a full semester.
Yeah.
And again, not.
Where are they taking it? At Brown or at CCRI?
We've held Roger Williams Hospital, there's a few different programs that are out there, whoever has the program out, when they reach that point, that's who we usually find and send them there.
And do all your recruits have to, because they're, they're the ones, the newer coming in recruits are the ones who man the rescues?
Yeah.
Right, because that's how you move up the ladder?
Exactly.
Nobody wants the rescue, because it's the busiest?
Well, we do have some senior, senior members that are on the rescue, career rescue people.
Right, and do, is it in the contract that they have to have their paramedic license, or is that just a?
Paramedic is optional, but that's where the state of Rhode Island is actually going, and it's gonna be another cost, cost later on, down the line.
As part of a requirement to be on the fire department?
And again, when you're getting a paramedic, you're, the skill level goes.
Right, no, I'm totally familiar with paramedics, sure, okay.
Through the chair, Councilman Rodrick's wanted a summary of what the big-ticket items were, and the biggest one they have right now is, and I think the, the mayor had mentioned this before, was the increase in the pension contribution.
Yes.
And, and that went up four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, just that one, one item alone. And, you know, besides that, if you looked, overtime went up a hundred and seventeen, stipends, which I do believe is a new thing in the contract, is a hundred thousand, and then overtime is three fifty-eight, those are your four items or so that.
Read that again for me, Malcolm.
Regular salaries, one seventeen.
Hold on, salaries?
Yes, stipend, one oh one, I'm rounding, it's a hundred and one thousand, overtime, three fifty-eight, pension, four seventeen, and purchase professional, one fifteen.
One?
One hundred and fifteen thousand. And then other lines, you've got pluses and minuses, but you wanted the, the highlight, and so those are the big-ticket items that I think you.
Thank you.
Now, I'd like to commend all of you for putting more money into the pensions fund, I think we can all agree that that's a critical thing.
Mm-hmm.
So.
So the, that training, the ten thousand hours, does that come out of overtime?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So actually, if we were to say, all of what was mentioned adds up to, actually,
actually, I made a miscalculation, around 4,000. So if we were to say 5,000 hours, what would that be in reduction? 5,000 hours less in training? What would that equate to in dollars?
What are we, what are we basing the 10,000 number on?
From what, what you guys presented, the 10,000 hours of training?
No, that was me. That was me doing my back of the math calculation.
Yeah, that's not, we don't have 10,000 hours of training in there.
So what I'm taking, you got about, let's, let's round it up, be conservative. About 5,000 hours of training is what they highlighted, right? So 5,000 hours were the training times, you know, what I basically came up with as an overtime rate of about $50 an hour based on the median salary for all your firefighters across the board. That comes out to 3,69,930. And that's, that's quick, again, Mr. Morato, that's quick calculations. And, you know, there are some higher-end salaries in there because, you know, battalion chiefs, et cetera, captains, lieutenants. So, I mean, I think if we were to be safe and call that 3.1 in overtime versus the proposed 3.358, I think that that would cover what we talked about tonight. And that 3.1 would be about a $266,000 increase over last year's actuals.
So it would be 3.266 instead of 3.358?
I would say, I would say make it straight, just 3.1.
And just remember, sir, that we're projecting more retirements. We're at 10 now. We're at 10 vacancies.
How many more?
I'm being conservative with six. It could go up to as high as nine or 10.
We have several people that are eligible.
But certainly retirements are something that we deal with year in and a year out basis, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm not saying, you guys know the fire department way better than I do, for sure. And when I'm just looking at the taxpayer and we've got to justify a $500,000 increase in, in overtime based on last year's expenses, I think a $300,000 increase is generous enough to account for some of these things that have happened to us before. And based on, based on the numbers that were presented tonight, right? Which is what I'm going off. I'm not just making it up. Based on the numbers that were presented tonight, that sounds like a big increase as it is.
Would you entertain using some of that money to increase the academy, which will bring the overtime budget down?
I, I think it's, it behooves all of us to have a full staff as much as possible, right? Because that's much more efficient for you guys.
That's our goal, is a full staff, which...
Safer for, right, firefighters, it's...
It's safer for everybody.
How much does it...
We have firefighters working eight, nine shifts in a row right now.
Yeah, that's not good for anybody, right?
It's not safe.
So what would it cost to run another academy? Or to increase the number? Can you increase the number?
We want to increase the number. If we can get it back up to 18, it's gonna be about 304,000.
I think the only additional expense would be the pay for that one recruit for 20 weeks.
The original number was 18. It was reduced down to 11.
You would, you would have an additional expense of one...
The only difference between the 11 and the 18 would be the pay for the treatees.
Hold on, we've got too many people talking simultaneously.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. Malcolm, go ahead.
The chief and I spoke a little bit earlier about this. And we had talked about with 26 men per shift and that you, with the vacations and all, you're usually down two or three people, which has overtime. And with the vacancies, you'll get more overtime. And at some point, it becomes a public safety issue. And, and so when you bring the extra people on, what should happen is your base pay and benefits will go up, overtime will come down. It's close. It's not exactly the same. The only caveat in that is that first year, the way it normally works is the academy comes in, say about April. And so you're paying those 10, let's say 10 for easy math, you're paying those 10 people for those 20 weeks of training. And when they come on, they come on in September, August. So that first year, you don't see really any savings. And you may have a little more additional cost because they're not on the rest, or they're not on the, on the shift yet. And so the following year, then what you'll see is your base pay numbers and benefits go up and your overtime go down. And if he wanted to put additional men on in his class, there's no additional overtime needed for the training. I think the only additional cost would be for that one recruit as far as paying them for the 20 weeks.
Paying them for 20 weeks, set of gear.
Yes. Right.
So chief, how is that you didn't have a, an academy, say, last year? Because this has been, this has been the topic for some...
It was proposed, but it was, it was cut.
Cut.
Actually, we had a lot proposed in last year's budget and we were cut. I believe our cost, our differential for...
Yeah, it was up. If I'm not mistaken, your initial, your initial budget that was submitted prior to it got to the council was additional $4 million, if I'm not mistaken.
$2.6 million cut before it ever came to the council.
Because that seems to be a question every year about academy for the fire department.
When the chief and I spoke and we agreed that if you just do simple math and the average fireman works 25 years and you've got 100 of them, every year you're losing four, they're retiring. So every two years, you should have a class of, say, 10. Assume two don't make it. And, and so, and that way you're, you're keeping your averages up. What'll happen is, you know, it'll come budget time and things get tight and they'll say, well, you can go another year without it. And that's invariably what happens.
So then it behooves the city, if we're gonna run a class, then we should have a decent-sized academy and not just 10? And have two classes within a fiscal year? You should have one decent class that can surpass our vacancies anticipating an additional, maybe half of that. So if you're thinking six to nine vacancies potentially next year, then maybe a lot for an additional five, give or take. So instead of an 11, maybe it'd be a class of 18. And hopefully, they all make through because as we know, that doesn't always happen that way. But that way, we're only paying one academy, one instructor, we're getting it all that out of the way in one sitting.
That's correct. And if we actually go to a fourth rescue, we'll have the personnel. And the last thing we want to do is not have another academy, you know? So I agree, Mark, so, I agree.
It seems like it's a priority. I remember a couple of years ago, former chief and a former city manager arguing, and I think it was the city manager who thought, well, we don't have to pay benefits if we just do overtime, if we hire, I mean, that's a ridiculous argument. We need to get the full staffing, safety of everybody.
Can I, can I just chime in on this? I would love to go to 18 of fire, fire academy or fire person academy, but there would be significant cost increases to the overall fire department budget. One of the things that we were tasked with when we put this budget together was to come to a budget that we could afford under the tax levy to put forward. And originally, the original plan was to have 18 people in the academy, but what you have to take into account is all the other associated costs associated with running those extra eight personnel also translates to, once they, once, the way to do it in the fire services, once they graduate the academy, they start out as full-time firefighters. So now you have to budget for X number of increase in your salary line to cover those full-time firefighters, their medical, everything else that comes associated with putting on new personnel. So your actual fire department numbers would go up for a little while until those retirements occurred and then we would balance off at some point. But there was, it was a significant impact on the budget and we had, you know, determined at the time that to put together a budget that was presentable to the council, we had to make some hot cuts. But if, if the council wants to go in that direction, we'd have to look at the numbers across the board for everything.
That is correct.
And it would be a significant impact on this, on this particular line.
So I, I agree with everything you said, Mr. Mayor. Chief Nevis made a similar argument when he presented to us earlier in the year. I would contend that though you take on the additional salaries, right, aside from all the safety issues and all the other stuff that goes along with reducing overtime, it's a much more efficient system because you're not paying time and a half for those salaries, right? You're paying people at base salary. And I have a question with regard to the overtime numbers that we figured. Do they take into account the most recent change in law that says overtime is only after 42 hours?
We didn't fall into that.
No, we didn't.
The fire department's always been...
That's based on...
Always 42 hours? There's different scheduling methods for firefighters and we don't have that scheduling method. Was there some people we tried to...
We're at the 42.
Yeah. Ours has always been 42.
It's always been 42, okay.
Yes. But look, if we want to look at what the fiscal impact would be to run an extra eight people through the academy, if we can make that work, that'd be fantastic. I just, we'd have to sit down and go back to the drawing board on this and really look at all the costs. Because some of the increases you'll see in, in the equipment, you have to equip every single firefighter with all of their turnout gear and everything else that comes associated with it, correct you?
Yes, sir.
And there's a cost associated with that also.
All right, so that sounds like a lot to do at a fly, on the fly at the last minute.
I would say that if we were to do this, we'd have to sit down tomorrow and, and really try to figure out what the total cost would be to run an extra eight people through and to budget it into the, into this.
Well, maybe we wouldn't run eight. Maybe, you know, there's 11 now, maybe we can add, you know, say, three or four more. How many would it take? So this, if we got another rescue in station one, right, and run for three?
Three.
Yep. What would that require for...
Require eight, eight firefighters.
Eight.
So that, that would mean your minimum unit would go up 34. Now, over the... 30, 28.
28. And again, we do have that presentation for you, so. Wait for that presentation and you can make an educated decision.
Very good. Yeah, I guess, I guess we defer it. I, I don't want, I don't want to do something that's rash.
Right. As much as, in as much as we're not voting anyway on this tonight, I think, you know, we've had a healthy discussion. We leave this alone, we have some tentative ideas, and we finalize it when we finalize it. But I don't have anything else to add to fire right now.
I say, at the, after hearing all of this and looking at the numbers, it is a huge increase. But if you add the increase from the overtime, that the professional development and the purchase of professional services, that adds to, that adds up to 2,000, $270,000. And that's, most of that, pretty much all of that's gonna go towards training and a new academy. And, you know, we can't get away from the pension contributions, that's something that should happen so we don't fall behind. So with that said and listening to what was presented tonight, it's my opinion that, you know, it gets approved as proposed. It's a big increase, but that's just my opinion.
But again, we're not approving anything tonight, so, but... Any, any other further questions at this point in time?
No.
Okay.
Mr. President, may I request a five-minute recess?
Yes, thank you, chief. Thank you, sir. Malcolm, we're gonna do you next, Malcolm.
Go to the finance side.
Oh, Chief S.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Want to do police work? Then he can get out.
That's all seen. Chief Nevis, we're gonna do you first.
Welcome.
Oh, it's not a horse seat, it's, you gotta stand up over there. We don't even sit you down.
Which page is he on?
He's in the back. You gotta handle more control too. Needing more. All right, we're gonna proceed with this meeting now. And we're gonna start with the police department on page 81. Section 700. That's page 81, section 700.
Before we do anything, Mr. President, can I recommend that we capture that discussion that we had in the, with the clerks department the other night with regard to the $50,000 for, what was it? It was printing and...
Printing and binding.
Printing and binding.
Printing and binding.
Preservation. Yes. And the indication is that funds from the preservation fund would be available to capture the scope of that work?
That's correct.
Okay. So then may I recommend, Malcolm, if we can jump just for two seconds to the clerk page? Well, you got the thing. So for us, that's 22. So then what I would be proposing is an additional reduction to the clerk's budget, yep, on that $50,000 line, which is printing and binding, 500, reduce $50,000 to $0. And that captures it, correct, Sam?
That's right. Yep. That's, I did a little bit more research and it shows that everything that is under printing and binding would be covered under the preservation fund.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along.
Try to take us back.
We have the police department up. Questions from the council?
Seeing that there are no questions, I guess we're all set.
I have a question.
Good to go.
I always have a question. We just went through this with the, with the fire department also. The detail pay line item. I noticed, chief, that it's 1.2 million. And I know we had these discussions before, a couple of months ago when we had that little workshop. And the discussion is that the detail pay, it's really not an expense to the police department because those details, the company pays the police department, which then the police department adds an administration fee and then pays the officer. And I understand that sometimes the, the wait, which we go through probably in every municipality, sometimes the companies just take time.
Right. So it's a reimbursable expense. So it is an expense and that's, that's going off the numbers that we paid last year in details with all the bridges you see being resurfaced and roads being repaved. So back in the early 90s, like you said, the officers would work a detail in August and then come Christmas time, they're still not being paid and they're looking for party. Hey, I worked a detail in August 18th, here it is, I was expecting this money for Christmas and it's not here. So in the early 90s, a contract agreement was reached with the city between the union and they agreed to pay upfront and let the city chase for the bills. So the money does go out. If you wanted to reduce it, I mean, Malcolm could probably tell you a safer level to reduce, like based on previous reimbursements, you know? So out of that 1.2 million you see being spent, the city does probably take in about 1.7 million. So we're usually about four, between $400,000 and $600,000 ahead of what we pay out. So the line does erase itself, but for budget purposes, it's not showing the revenue on there, so I understand the confusion, but it's not necessarily a city expense, no. But I would not take it out entirely either because there is gonna be some buffer zone between paying, paying out and collecting.
That's an excellent point. So with that said, I mean, I'm looking at the bottom line, right? And I look at, I look through these line items and I see that 1.2 as an expense. And I understand what you're saying, chief. So I guess the question would be to Malcolm, so how do we correct that where we can erase that 1.2 from the bottom line on, in this department's budget? How do we, how do we fix that moving forward where this line item, even now actually, can be removed as an expense, which it's not an expense?
I'm, I'm trying to figure that one out. I mean, you could create maybe a division. I think maybe we had special detail before, separate. So you'd have the police budget. Currently under police, you also have the Dog Pound and the Harbor Master. Maybe we could have details. So that would show still within his department, but it would not directly reflect in his police budget.
Do you think a better, a better way to fix this would be to show the revenue right under that line item? Kind of like the water...
Water department, is that what?
Water department at the end where you show expenses and then it shows revenue.
Well, and we talked about...
Which cancels itself off.
Right. And hopefully in the next budget, we'll be able to redo the revenue. So when it shows up, on the top, you'll see police revenue and then you'll, and then, you know, when you see that, then above it, you'll say, oh, that's why, because you have the offset. So you'll be able to see it in that, on your one-page summary for the police department.
This is the same situation where you see the line item for VINS. Monday through Friday, we provide a service to the citizens of East Province and actually throughout the state because we're one of the few departments that does it every day of the week. of the week. That's an expense, because it's a detail, that's a city detail, it is time and a half for the officer, so that's an expense paid out, but what it does not show is that per VIN collected, it's ten to fifteen dollars. We've talked about raising the price of Vins for non-city residents, letting the city residents still pay what they do, and non-city residents pay twenty dollars. So then, as the Chief mentioned, right, if you, you don't want to direct zero it out, because you do have a lag in catch-up pay, right, getting, chasing guys down, what if, pending figuring this all out, which may not be done by the time we get done with this budget, what if we just left a couple hundred thousand in it?
That's, that's the direction I was going.
Right, because I'm, I'm just going off of, and I know that was a wag, right, I know, you know, the, the revenue was a wag, but if the revenue is exceeding the expenditure by a substantial amount, you know, leave a little bit in there just to, so they can get it straight.
Malcolm, with two hundred, actually, or the Chief, with two hundred thousand cover, you know, that little bit of, that lag time?
So, because the fiscal year is, is odd, and starting November first, I think it would be okay, because there's not a lot of details soon in the November timeframe, where they usually start up in spring, and I think by that time, I mean, maybe, maybe a little bit more, actually, now, now this, because it is a slow time, I don't know if that stuff will be reimbursed enough to, to have enough of a pool in summer.
Is the month where the money comes in? It would be the three months.
So, they don't have a copy of this, though?
No.
So if you want to, if you can pass it all down, it is broken up by month, so you can probably have an educated guess as to what's been coming in monthly.
So, would it be safe to say that two hundred would cover, being that the fiscal year starts in November?
It looks like it, because from what I saw quickly, it's about average of fifty thousand dollars a month that's coming in.
With the, yeah, there was a big jump in November. Maybe three fifty would be safer, I don't know.
How about half?
I was saying, three hundred then.
Yeah, maybe a little bit less.
Two fifty. He's saying two hundred's good, I think two fifty would more than cover.
Okay.
I mean, what, if you look at his budget for his department, you've got seven hun, seven hundred Police, seven twenty Animal Shelter, seven thirty Harbor Master, so I could create one called seven ten, which would really just have that one line item for details.
But would that cancel, will, would that line item and that new location also cancel itself out? Not, it's not an expense, that's what we're trying to get at.
But the way the, the auditors will show it, is they have to show that, because it's an expense incurred by the city. Because if, if for some reason, they don't, we send the bill out and they don't pay it, we still have to pay that expense.
Right.
So even though we pay it and, and received money, the way it's recorded, and it's the way the auditors want to see it, is you'll see detail revenue and then detail expense.
So, as long as we get that amount down, we can leave it where it is, right, rather than make it separate?
It kind of looks like on a month-to-month for this paper, that they were getting, so in each month, we're getting back at least half of what we pay.
Yeah, we also get a, there's also a admin fee that's attached to that. It's got to be in the budget, ain't it?
Right, it's, yeah, it's on here.
The movement's on there.
Yeah, admin fee.
So if you want a comparison, we have a, a year-to-date, two thousand and nineteen, for the same category, and, you know, I'm showing, so if you want to prepare for discrepancy, like, one of the months of February has a hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
But this is the same issue you would have in the Fire Department with the Rescue, because they bring in two point four million in Rescue, and that offsets the, the Rescue runs. But we show that as, you know, Fire Rescue Revenue, because we still have to pay the people.
Right, but if ultimately you take in more than you spend, right?
Yes.
In this situation, it's a little bit different, because of, it actually generates money.
Yes.
You know, basing, basing a tax levy on an expenditure that is ultimately not going to be a deficit, right, is ultimately not going to be a debit, it's going to be a credit, is probably the wrong thing to do.
But you have the credit also on the revenue side. So if you look at the department revenue I gave you, you'll see that, under, under Police, you'll see a one point seven million. So they both show, this almost kind of goes back to the school expense?
Yep.
You had a school revenue and a school expense, and you're like, well...
Yep, but that was basically zero sum. This is a case where the revenue exceeds the expenditure.
Correct.
And by a substantial amount.
So I, on that line item, if it's, you know, as the Chief said, to have something in there, to carry them over as, you know, because they pay those detail officers on a weekly basis, I'm assuming.
Correct, bi-weekly.
And then, but sometimes the detail companies, they just drag their feet, Verizon and Cox Cable notorious for that. So they just need something in there to cover those costs, and I think that leaving two fifty in there is safe, and until we figure out a better system on how to properly put that into a different line item, but for now, I think keeping two fifty, reducing that by nine fifty and keeping two fifty in there, I think it's more than safe, you know, that's my opinion. Would you agree to that, Chief?
It, it looks like it would be okay on paper, and I understand your point about not basing a budget on a total sum, that sum of it is reimbursable.
I agree.
I mean, what you could, now, are we still saying that the, the difference is going to come back to the city, that surplus?
Well, doesn't every surplus in every one of these line items go to the city?
That is correct.
So it's, I don't understand it.
Okay.
Yes, we weren't changing that.
Hmm?
We weren't changing that.
Okay.
No, we're not changing, no, correct.
I mean, because you're, you're, I, I don't think it's correct to, to just say, we've got to put two hundred in that, because we're, we are actually expending one point two million, and we are getting reimbursed for it. I could talk to the auditors about that, this is the way it's been done, as far as I know, for, you know, for everywhere I've worked, is when, when the revenue comes in, you have the Police Detail Revenue. I don't know of any place that nets it, and I'd have to talk to the auditors to see if that's even, you know, because they have to look at, and I know you'd asked us before, but the Government Accounting Standards Boards, they, they want, they want to show it, your expenses and your revenue, and so we encourage the expense, we send the bill out, and that bill hopefully will get paid, which will generate revenue. So, if, because if, I know you're saying is, we get reimbursed, but if you have a company, I buy product and material, and, yeah, I'm getting reimbursed for it when I sell it, but you still have all your expenses and then you show your revenue separately.
So it seems to me that the easiest and the logical way to fix this is to put the expense and underneath it, put the revenue, which will basically cancel out the expense. Now, if you want to put one point two million as in expense to cover, to sing, zero out the other one point two, and the rest of that goes into the general fund, you know, where every other generating item on this list goes into the general fund, that's fine with me, but the point is that this one point two doesn't come out of the Police Department's budget. It comes out of the detail budget, which actually generates more money than what they're paying out.
I think there's an added consideration that Malcolm brought up. To do it that way, I think, would be clean in that, it would show, but then, that would also show that money residing with the Police Department, which is not the case, it actually goes back to the city. So you would actually have to add one more line in the Police Department that said, you know, transfer to City, or transfer to General Fund, or something along those lines, am I right?
Depends on how you'd show it, you know, you could actually set up a separate fund, which I think we did before, where you had, so you didn't even show in the budget at all. It was outside of the General Fund, it had its own, its own separate fund. Just, a fund's basically a, a separate company. So we'd set up a separate company, and you'd have the revenue and expenses, and then any surplus generated would then be transferred back in as a transfer into the city.
I personally, anything that's an expenditure that has a revenue associated with it, I'd want to see that line as the very next line. And if there's ultimately a line that has to go transfer back to the city for general, you know, to the General Fund, if that's the way it's done, then, then, then that's fine.
I...
But if I look at, otherwise, we have this discussion every year, I look at a budget and I look at numbers that otherwise don't add up, because sitting outside of here is a big blob of revenue, which I can't tell what's coming from where.
This also be true with the VIN checks?
Yes.
So the same thing would go for the next line, the fifty-one thousand five hundred.
The, I guess the best way is, and the mayor had requested this, and again, I said, we haven't been able to do this, because the, the revenue comes in as one number. I did request from Sue Lucignan, and she had sent over the Excel spreadsheet, which, which detailed how much was for the, the Details and the Cars and the Administration and the VIN checks. So hopefully next year, what we will be able to do is, just like the water and sewer on the top, it'll say Police Revenue Detail, and Cars and VIN checks, so that if you have a question, you can go up top and say, oh, there's your offsetting revenue, just like you have with water and sewer. And that's the way it probably should be shown, so that you could get the, a clear and concise picture of each division.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I mean, the bottom line is, to keep it simple, all we're talking about is, we, we have to have a, a line item that explains this, we do have an expense initially, but we're getting that back, and in some cases, a little extra. So it's, as long as it's clear, and it may look like on paper that the budget is that much bigger, because we have to show it, but we know that it's reimbursable, but then some.
Right, there's a revenue in the...
There's a, there's a revenue there, we're just not seeing it.
Right.
And it's a net revenue.
And it's a net revenue.
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't see this as a problem.
I don't either.
So then the recommendation would be a reduction to?
I'd say not to change.
Two fifty.
Personally, just to leave it.
Leave it as one point two?
Because it cancels itself out, so we're really not...
But it's not canceling.
But it doesn't cancel itself out. There's a net revenue, there's, you take in another five hundred K.
But it'll eventually be showing up top, the revenue that says Police Detail, one point.
The net revenue, it's not going to be a cost.
Right. We just don't have it presented that way, much like the other departments, it's just not presented.
And we never have.
Where we can justify it, like what we do in the Water Department.
Has there ever been a year when there was not a, a surplus for this, or that it did not, the revenue did not meet the expense? Has that ever happened? In these two, in these items?
No, and we can see the revenue drop, there was a, a raise granted to the retired police officers over the past year, I didn't want to say it was a twelve percent raise, so what we have to do is adjust our, what we're charging accordingly, which we're talking about doing this year, and adding an administrative fee, like you've suggested, because we do not, right now, anything outside of Rhode Island DOT does not pay an administrative fee.
And the local community, they pay twenty percent.
A lot of them pay percentages.
All across. You know which one.
Yes. I don't want to mention it.
So back, back to this, this discussion, I mean, so if we add every one of these line items, it adds to the proposed seventeen point one four million. And my, as, going back to my point, that one point two million is not an expense as, you know, dental insurance, or postage, and so on and so forth. So that number doesn't belong here, or it needs to be canceled out, is what I'm trying to say. So, I don't know how we move, you know, past this budget, now, this item, it, it is an increase of one point seventeen million, one point, one million seventeen thousand and fifty-eight dollars, that's an overall increase for this, for this department.
All right, and, and to the Chair, Councilman, I, I think, seeing this out, we're not talking about increasing or decreasing this, this budget, it's just a matter of how it's presented. I'll reach out to the auditors tomorrow and see how other communities do it. I mean, for the VIN checks and all, I think the, the officer's there, and I'm paying him whether he's there or not, whether or not he does one VIN check or ten. So under that scenario, you know, it's, it's a fixed cost, they're bringing somebody in for four hours, hopefully somebody will show up, I think. But we can talk about, you know, the best way to present it, so it doesn't look misleading, like I should say, in this department, where, oh, look, they had a big increase, but it was really due to the Details, because, you know, we're having very good construction season.
But if it's, if that's, if you determine that to be the case, will that reduce the budget by at least one point two million? Will that reduce this overall budget by one point two? Will it cancel itself out?
I don't think it'll be presented that way.
I don't think so either.
Right, because there are those expenses, it may be shown in a different place and a different way, but I don't think it, and it may not be shown in seven hundred, you know, so it would be shown, so that if you were trying to say, what are the things that you can control, then that would be the Police, it would be everything in there but say, maybe the detail line, because that all is predicated on somebody calling up and saying, I need a detail, and I'm going to pay you for it. So you can't control that one, that always says, you know, when that one always goes over, I, I would normally say, well, you have to look at the revenue, because they've generated more revenue, so more revenue, more expense.
So let's, let's look at the way, like, big, big scope, right, the way you guys figure out the budget, calculate all your projected expenditures, right, from that less, the revenues that you're taking into the General Fund, and then, then you figure out what your levy would be, what your taxes would have to be, to make up that difference. So, so per that logic, if you knock it out of this line, right, you've got to knock the one point seven or whatever out of the, the General Fund, right, it's just going to offset, it's not going to offset the levy, you just offset the revenue.
Right, there's no change in the total bottom line, it's just a matter of how...
Bottom line's the same.
Yeah.
I was just going to say that, the bottom line would be the same. You're budgeting one point six million in revenue, in the Police Department, they're budgeting one point two of expense, net, you're showing in your budget, a four hundred thousand dollar profit, let's say. If you were to move the money around somewhere, it wouldn't change your net budget at all. I agree with the proposal of next year showing a revenue box somewhere in, in this budget, saying, this is what we're generating of revenue, even though it's in the revenue section, this is what the Police Department is, is generating. The line. Which would be a great idea, but, you know, changing it to two fifty or something really wouldn't, you're generating four hundred thousand dollar profit in your budget. Changing the way it's presented doesn't change that at all. And, and almost every community I've seen does it the same way, they have to budget, pretty much, by accounting standards, the revenue amount and the expenditure amount.
Kind of like your budget to build a school, but you don't get money back.
Any other further questions? Any other further questions from the council?
I do, if I may. So, Chief, under line fifty-four, three, one, zero, repairs in building, we know that the police station is an old building, and there's been work that's needed to take place. I notice every year in our capital budget, different buildings throughout the city have capital improvements to their buildings. I know this year, Station One and Three, I believe, are getting a new AC system placed. I've never seen anything, I don't know if Councilman, Council President, have you seen anything come across for the Police Department, getting any building repairs, HVAC, heating systems, anything of that nature, is that...
Well, when I explained at the private meeting we had originally for preliminary budget talks about last year's budget, I've been refraining from putting in for capital improvements in order to let the other city departments use that, because we do still have some massive forfeiture money. Yes, the building is in dire need of repair, there are some parts of the building that haven't been remodeled since the eighties, and their carpeting, so there's, I'm sure there's a lot of dust, and there's a lot of things in there. Recently, there's, there's some carpeting on the wall to shield Dispatch Center from sounds, and we recently brought in a company to steam clean the walls, because they'd never been done since the building was built. HVAC, it's always in need, it's been in need, actually, I think that was our last request in capital improvements, maybe three or four years ago, and it was never done, that's a dire one. Actually, we will need that one for accreditation, because the Fire Department walked through and noticed that we had open doors, that are supposed, that fire doors are supposed to remain closed. With the current system we have, we can't keep them closed. There's some parts of the building that are ninety degrees, while other parts are fifty.
So is that something that your, your asset forfeiture would cover, and that's why you don't come to the city, or you just not wanted to come to the city for those repairs? Because I think it's important that, obviously, you're a public safety facility, we have employees that work in that building, and clearly, it's important, just like the schools, we want to provide a good, safe working environment, not to mention the public comes into your facility.
Right, it's a little of both, like I said, it's our way of, of giving back to the city and letting the other departments, School Department, for instance, or Fire Department, whatever, they need, use capital budget for them, because we know it's a limited budget. We have some land that was donated to us from PCD that we'd like to develop, where we could use a, a three-bay garage to protect the Bearcat, and to house, when we have a vehicle that's involved in a crime, right now, all we do is we put it in the...
Right now, all we do is we put it in the Sallyport, so when there's a vehicle in there that can't be touched and it's under constant surveillance with the cameras, we have to walk prisoners through a different entrance, and it's not as safe for the officers to do that. They're walking through the building.
Are those things that you go out to bid for?
Yes.
Like the rest of the city does? So is that something that you have to come to the council for your asset forfeiture use, or do you guys do it on your own?
A little of both, because with the expenses, we go through the normal city bidding procedure and authorization procedure. So an expense like that would have to come through here, yes.
Come in front of the council?
Yes, just like the Bearcat. We had a presentation in front of the sitting council at the time to say that this is what we'd like to spend, this is why, and explain it's not taxpayer dollars and something we wouldn't be able to afford without this forfeiture.
And it supplements what you currently have, which is, I think, a key piece of that.
Well, I mean, supplement, yes, but supplant, no. So as you see, the capital, we did ask for $200,000 worth of cars. As you can see, again, back in the early 90s, why that vehicle fee was established by Chief Winkus at the time was so the city never had to buy police vehicles. So if you see, we're asking for 200,000, and if you look in fiscal year 2019, we've taken in 191,000 from having those vehicles out on the roadways that you see. So normally, that's used to buy the cars that we need, but that started going into the general fund. And they just said, we'll put it in the general fund, if you don't need a car, you know, we can use it for other things, but if you need cars, just ask, and we'll give you the cars. So we're asking, because if we normally budget $200,000 every year for cars, and then suddenly remove them from your budget for three or four years, that is supplanting the budget, and the federal government could seize the rest of the money that we have.
So with that said, the capital improvements is a 200,000 line item for police vehicles. It's, with that, that has to be done that way, because if it's, if you try to use the Google money, you could lose the rest.
Well, because we've used Google money so many times in a row, and Malcolm, you can probably tell us, the last time we bought a bulk of cars, I know last year the city bought one. It's been a while since we've spent for cars out of our budget, and I don't want to get away from having our budget cover the cars to get us in trouble with the federal government.
That makes sense.
You know, that 200,000, that's, from my experience, that's about four cars.
Correct.
You're fed.
Which is a good way of maintaining your fleet, because it keeps them balanced, and you're not making vehicle purchases. You know, when we first got the Google money, our mistake was replacing the fleet at once, which then you have to do that again.
Again.
And someday, you're not going to have Google money in order to help you do that. So we're trying to do it on a rotational basis, where they're fewer at a time. And as you know, just when they're sitting idle, it's about, I think, 30 miles per hour engine idle, even when they're sitting on the corner. So just because the odometer doesn't reflect the high miles on some of them, they are running 24 hours a day.
So Chief, I just caught something that you mentioned. Well, first of all, the previous meeting that we had a few months ago, we talked about accreditation. Accreditation is important to me, and it should be important to the city, because it does save the city in frivolous lawsuits, and it also, once we get accredited, are deductible for civil rights-type lawsuits. It jumps from $2,500 if we were accredited, to $75,000 deductible for each incident. So that is an important, important to achieve accreditation. You mentioned, again, the HVAC system. What's going on with that? Since that last meeting, has?
Last I had heard, it's going to be replaced next year. Ed Cattelli is going to go out to bid. It was too late to do it. We had, we thought we were going to start this year, it was too late to get started. We need neutral weather, when you don't really need to run the heat or the AC. We got started too late in the spring in order to do it then, and then it was too hot to do in the summer, and we got too late to do it in the fall. By the time they ordered the parts and things that they needed, we wouldn't be able to come in on time.
And the other thing I just picked up on was the, there's a vehicle parked in the Sallyport, which is the security location to bring in a prisoner. So when there's a vehicle in there now, where do they bring, how do they bring prisoners in?
We have to walk through a different entrance and go down, you know, a couple of different hallways, which in the previous years was dangerous, because it wasn't covered by camera, but those, at least now, are covered by cameras. But it is a longer walk for the officers, and, you know, when there's a struggling prisoner, you know, it just, it's.
So for accreditation purposes, that's, you know, that's wrong, right? And we know that, for an officer's safety perspective.
And I should stress, that's a rare occasion when we have a vehicle that's involved in a crime that we need processed, just for a short time, until it is processed.
So how would that, how could that be fixed? Like, what would the building need?
Well, like I said, with this new land, so right now, we walk on the police station. The Rhode Island Philharmonic is nice enough to allow us to park probably 20 to 25 cars in their back lot. We park all of our detail cars there. So now, with this new land, we'll be able to accommodate all of our own cars and not have to burden our neighbors, and hopefully, there's enough room to build that type of garage where we can protect our Bearcat, and we can have a safe storage area for crime, helmets of crimes.
Everything you just talked about, though, sounds like it fits the definition of supplement to me.
Yes. Like, we wouldn't have to use taxpayer dollars for that, no. There's a new item in the asset forfeiture guide that allows us to get reimbursed for overtime. So we just received 2.1 million in our last year's reimbursement, going back to August of 2018, for our overtime. When they do that, I just have to assure the government that the city is not going to take that money and use it for, for instance, this new school. Just because that money is freed up, it's that, so when you talk about money before, earlier, that had to, you didn't want that money to remain with the police department, you wanted it to go into the general fund, this 2.1 million has to stay with the police department, or else, again, we risk losing the balance.
Chief, if we could just back up a little bit, get back to the HVAC unit, you said it was too late?
Yes.
What is the lead time on that unit?
Ed Cattelli would know better than me. I want to say, a month or two ago, we were ready to sign, and it was just, it was something that had to go out to bid. Again, I guess, we used National Grid and Prism Energy, who was an established and accepted contractual person for the city. And it was just, by the time the parts had come in, it was one of those, if it wasn't done within this week, it's too late, by the time the parts come in.
Is it the entire rooftop unit that you're replacing? Is it the duct that you're removing?
Everything.
So you're replacing the whole entire unit?
Yeah, we work in a closed-air environment, and I, you know, picture the cell block, there are no windows, there's no ventilation, it's got to be a fresh air introduced system. There are so many different offices, and the building has changed a little, where some of the ducts are not even connected anymore, the thermostats on the wall don't work. You know, dispatch, if you walk in dispatch in August, you'll see them with a space heater that looks like a fireplace, and them sitting on the blankets. It's just, it's, it's just, it's, this new system was designed to, according to Prism Energy, was going to save the city $31,000 a year in energy costs, so over a 15-year period, it would have paid itself back. And this offered individual controls to allow everyone to pick their own, you know, comfort level, within reason, because we also had the ability to restrict it. I mean, we couldn't have someone putting it on 100 because they were, you know, chilly that day, I mean, we could put caps.
So is there an RFP at this point in time?
Ed Cattelli is preparing one, as far as I know.
So what's the anticipated date that it's going to go out for bid?
I do not know.
Mr. President, Chief, are you at full staff?
No. We're about 20 officers short. We can't, we have a list right now, I remember the total that it's down to, probably 40 to 50 out of the 230 that applied. We wouldn't be able to hire 20 right away. We can only accommodate eight. It used to be six, but we sent a couple of extra people through FTO School, so that we could take a few more. So this academy in December, in January, rather, we're hoping to put eight on the road, sorry, eight in the academy.
That'll help a little with overtime?
No, and that's why I explained, usually, it's an inverse relationship between the salary line and overtime, but because we got such a late start, by the time they graduate, it'll be March. Then they have a 13-week in-house program that they have to pass here, and it's not guaranteed, just because they pass the academy, that they're going to make it. One of the last classes out of the four that graduated, we kept one.
Chief, are we able to run two academies?
No, they're twice a year. January and July. We missed the July deadline.
I'm going to see if you do.
We missed the July 2020 deadline?
No, last July.
Oh, right, no, yeah, I know we missed this year's deadline, but I'm saying, for next year, so one starting in January, could we?
We're trying to have one next July as well, yes.
Yeah, it would be advantageous for the city to have two next year, since we have such a low manning.
Correct.
And we missed it this year.
I mean, can you just clarify that, when you said you missed in July? I thought you had a?
The recruitment process started too late. It takes like, basically, one year in order to get the process going, from start recruitment until graduation from the academy, and just the recruitment process was held up, and we didn't, we didn't make the July deadline. Because there's a time period between, you know, doctors' visits, psych tests, a number of different things that we have to put the recruits through, between.
So you don't have an upcoming academy?
I'm sorry?
You don't have an upcoming academy?
Yes, December.
Oh, December, okay.
I mean, January, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So January and July, but we missed July of 2019's academy by not starting the recruitment process in time.
Should have started in January, in other words. Takes a six months, it's about a six-month recruitment period before you can get qualified candidates and vet it out to go to the academy. So process should have started in January.
Any other further questions for the Chief?
I do. Chief, can we take a look at that overtime line for a second?
Yes, sure.
Right? Understanding that last year's expenditure was reimbursed with Google funds, the 2.1 million that you referenced, and I see that our, this year's budget is based on, basically, that same amount. And I guess that makes, based on everything you've just explained with regard to strength of force, that makes sense, right? What other better number could you come up with? My question is this: what if we were to hold the line on the FY '19 budget number of 1.6 million? If you exceed 1.6 million, you use Google money to pay for whatever the overtime is above and beyond the budgeted amount?
That's acceptable now, with, under their standards, yes.
So in that case, right, we're saying, yeah, because I read the guide, Malcolm provided me the guide, it was actually a fairly straightforward guide, as far as federal regulations go, but my thinking is, we're not decreasing our budget, we're not cutting our budget to supplant it with funds, we're setting a goal, we're trying to hold the line on what we think it should be, we're trying to hire, and if we exceed it, then we have a safety net.
Correct.
So based on that, I'd like to make a recommendation that we decrease that line from 2115227 to a straight 1.6, under overtime.
Now, what would we need, Chief, if we wanted to run a July recruitment?
We still have, well, it depends on where we end up with this list. It depends on how many qualified candidates we have. If we have 16 qualified candidates, obviously, we're going to try to put eight in January. The problem would be getting that other eight to remain with us and say that we will wait for East Providence to go to an academy. Problem is nowadays, not too many people want this job, and they're all applying to different departments.
Sure.
So their number may be called by another department prior to us getting to them. If we do have qualified candidates, of course, we will send them. If this list seems to be depleted, we will start a recruitment drive again.
In January?
Yes.
Okay. And would we, do you have the funds in the budget to do that?
Same thing, we could turn to our Google funds to do that.
How much do we have left in Google funds? Because my concern is, if everything is going through the Google, unlike, say, the fire department, eventually, we'll run out of that safe net.
Correct.
Which we've been using as a lifeline for quite some time.
Right, there's still 8.1 million in there.
May I ask you one more question, Chief? And it doesn't, it's not going to be a budget question. I note that one of the specialized programs under the guide is potentially school resource officers, right?
Correct.
Having been on a school committee.
That's also new.
Those, yeah, that program is phenomenal. I personally always express an opinion that I would like to see that expanded as much as possible, understanding you've got, you know, force issues that you have to deal with. What do you feel about that ultimately? If that's something we can get to full strength, is that something that you might support?
I think it's a great program. As a matter of fact, now, Captain David, before he left a few years ago, had established a school ambassador program, whereas if there is a post, the guys who select permanent posts, for instance, have, if they work on post one, for instance, all the elementary schools that don't have school resource officers, they're assigned to a school. So there is an officer that's assigned to a school to go in and introduce themselves and act as a quasi-SRO. Obviously, they're not going to spend their whole time in there, but they do stop in and, you know, get the kids introduced to the police department as their friends and not some of the fear.
So getting back to the building of the garages and the extending of that parking lot, would that, would the Google money cover that? Would it fit the guidelines?
When it comes to the Google money, there's two federal requirements when you talk about moving land and renovation to buildings now, although Councilman Cahoon said the guide was straightforward. It is a little different now, because we would have to settle these federal requirements, which I understand are difficult. So the end around, if you want to call it that, because I don't want it to appear like we're doing something that we shouldn't be doing, but by getting that 2.1 million reimbursed for overtime, as long as the city does not take that money and put it elsewhere, that money is now returned to the police budget to do with it what they see fit. So it's not, the Google funds, the Google funds are applied to overtime only, and then the freed money gets to do some of the things that we need to do.
And I would contend to be safe, right? Although Google funds can be used for overtime, I would, I would say that a situation, if we were to zero out that entire budget and say, oh, we have no overtime magically, and say, take it all of that, that would very much be a supplanting issue.
Sounds it.
So the easy answer is, can we use the money?
So again, instead of cutting that line item, would it, would we leave it for them to make that garage and extend that parking lot, essentially?
Well, I don't, I don't think we have, we don't have purview over that money. That's provided to the LEA, right, for law enforcement uses. It's, I mean, the guide's fairly clear. The council can't go, do this, do that.
Right.
But the council can say, you know, your overtime budget is this, right? And if their expenditures exceed that, then, you know, then they can, you know, they can use it, because that's a, you know, specific, that's a specific use. We couldn't say, hey, Chief Nevis, go build this, right? Because that's not within the council's purview. We do not have authority over that funding.
Not necessarily, I mean, I mean, obviously, you run the city and you're responsible to the taxpayers, so yes, you could, as long as it fell under the guidelines that are in front of you, in the asset forfeiture guide. It's got to be police-only, you know, training facility, workout facility, something that is used by police only. If you see, like, some of these other communities are building police and fire buildings, there's a percentage that's set forth, so let's say it's 60% police, 40% fire, they can use federal asset forfeiture funds for only 60% of that project, and the city has to kick in the other 40%.
So this council should not look at this, any of the Google money, as a way to reduce budgets.
No, you can't. They would see.
That's not, right.
Never did, right.
No, no.
Yeah.
It's designed to give police departments what they couldn't normally afford with taxpayer money, you know, stuff like, you know, a lot of times, they used to buy those unmarked cars, they used to buy moving radar units, I mean, any number of things, drug fighting tools, you know.
I just don't want any of the general public to think, you know, we've got 8 million dollars in a Google account that is going to.
Pay the police for a year.
Exactly, and it's not going to help taxpayers per se. It is, it is a positive thing, it does help get some things done, but the same money that is allocated stays in the police department for something else. You can't go back to schools or public works.
But as you can see, I don't know what discussions you've had prior to me stepping in about the pension fund, when they raised the mortality age, the city's kicking in an extra $2 million this year in police and fire pension. Without that $50 million infused in, from Google, it would be way more than $2 million that had to be infused this year. So it does save the taxpayers money in that sense. It also saves them, and we have to keep our assets for three years once they're purchased with asset forfeiture. So, we give gently-used vehicles to other departments. For instance, we will buy the newer cars for the police department and trickle down the other cars to other units, whether it be the fire department, who are in need of cars, and I know they were petitioning the budget earlier this year for, for cars. So, it makes sense for us to buy them as well, and that is what was good about the city agreeing. I know you haven't agreed yet, but if the city agrees to spend 400,000 on cruisers, we can then spend some for massive forfeiture and turn some money over.
Can you buy, can you buy a rescue truck for Ward One?
As long as it says police on it.
Just put police on it, that's all.
Through the chair, I just want to make sure that we're clear on this. Councilman Cahoon, you had said that, you know, anything over the 1.6 we can get from Google. And I want to make sure that, you know, because it seems to me, if, if I'm looking at this, well, our regular salaries are down 400, 500,000. So, I would benefit by keeping our police force a little understaffed to drive up our overtime, so I could get that paid by Google. Does that make sense?
But it still doesn't free up the money because that stays with us in the police department.
Right. Yeah, and I don't think there's any intent, based on everything I heard, where running academies, trying to staff up as quickly as possible. Nothing I heard tells me that somebody's trying to, you know, unnaturally depress the recruiting simply to decrease our...
And so, and if we got fully staffed, then next year, we would come in, we'd have another half million dollar increase, because then our base pay would go from 7.5 back up to a million.
Which would not be available to be paid with Google money because of clearly...
And then overtime would come down to 1.6.
Right.
Okay.
And I should add that 40% of our police department can retire tomorrow.
Oh, thanks for that.
So, and the reason I say that is, I mean, obviously, with the unfortunate passing of one of our detectives, we also had a retirement this week, and we've had, over the last year, a couple of people went to the state police. We had a lateral transfer from Providence, who was getting ordered daily and decided this is not a retirement job for him. So, we're getting laterals that are being overworked because we can't catch up and keep people underneath them in order to save them. So, I mean, if we continue on this pace, in a few years, I, I question whether or not we'll be able to fill the positions on the road.
And I think we had that same discussion with the fire chief, as far as you need to have the recruitment classes every, every couple of years, because, like you said, 40% can retire, and same with the fire department, you've got approximately 100 people, 25 years normally, so you've got four or five people retiring every year. So, you, you'd need to replace 10 every other year. And we seem to get behind the ball in that, and, and their recruitment process is rather strenuous and time-consuming, so, you know, you, it's not like, oh, we can just throw one together. It's a pretty long process.
Okay. Oh, chief, thank you. Appreciate your time.
No other questions. Hope you get that HVAC system going.
Yeah.
So, why are reflecting that reduction in the overtime line, in the overall budget number, right?
That's the only...
That's the only change, I think, that we, I didn't hear anything else.
So, we're going to proceed right on to page 29, section 260, the finance department. But before we do so, Malcolm, I just had a brainstorm, and I just want to reflect back to yesterday with the rec department, with Diane coming up here. And we've had this conversation last year with Inspector Lloyd Nation. The money that was from, I think, a dollar from the sales of the ticket was earmarked. For each ticket sold for a concert, there was earmarked to go to the rec department. Was that, did that ever happen?
Do we have that money available? I'll look that up right now, I've got that here. The money does go in there, and I believe it was for D P W and recreation.
Yes.
Currently, we have, I'm looking at the latest numbers, starting this year, we had 43,331. We've added 24,145.
Twenty, I'm sorry?
We currently have 67,476.
That's how much we got from the ticket sales?
Cumulative. This year, we've put another 24,000 in. We haven't been spending the money, we've sort of been stockpiling. So, we're putting in 20,000 a year. This is our third year, we've got 67,474.
67,476.
And we may, yeah, 67,476.
76.
I'm not sure if we're going to get another deposit or not. I'm looking at one on 625, one on 716, and one on 826. So, we may be getting one more in, I don't know.
Okay. And that, that money is going directly to both departments?
It, it is sitting there, and we've had discussions with the mayor about...
The rec and the, and the parks.
Right. Yeah, I think it was, yeah, because that rolled into, sorry, I said D P W, but it's highway, because highway took over parks.
Right.
So, highway and recreation, I think.
Is that, is that in this budget?
No, because the way it's said is, it was a dollar per ticket, and then a dollar ten or twenty, or a dollar and a quarter per ticket. And so, that money's just sitting in a separate account to be used by either one of those departments upon the approval of the...
So, in an event where we had that discussion about the fireworks last night, that money could be used for fireworks, essentially?
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, anything in recreation and fireworks.
Here we are, getting our scale back, and we have in excess of 67,000 in the count...
Correct.
As opposed to scaling back on, on the items that we had discussed last night.
Right.
So, we may want to revisit the...
So, we can...
So, this is where, this is where, again, and it's kind of redundant and repetitive, but we, I guess we can't stress enough the importance of having the revenue on each of these, because much like this specific example, other, there are other examples in other departments, like I believe Carousel has one of those where certain revenue is supposed to go back into their budget. Pierce Field, I think, had something before where something else is supposed to go back into their budget. If we don't have that, and we're putting it, I mean, we shouldn't be practicing like the state of Rhode Island does, where everything goes into a general fund. There are things that are supposed to be allocated to certain departments, and that was agreed upon, and that was the intention, and then it just doesn't happen, doesn't really fly well.
There was, in going back, there used to be all kinds of money set aside, you know, the police details, the fire rescue, everybody had their little pot of money. When the Budget Commission came in, they said, no, it's all going to go into the general fund because we need all of that revenue. And I believe since then, there's been a couple of items, I'm looking at...
But this is, but this has been long after the Budget Commission. This was specifically geared for, that I recall, recs and parks.
And you're correct. I was just giving you a history, and, and since then, the council has approved a few items to be set aside.
Right.
Now, this, this money can only be spent after it comes before the council for approval, or could department head, or the mayor's office, or someone spend this, and we wouldn't know about it?
No, we wouldn't.
No, we wouldn't, yeah.
We wouldn't, because it wasn't brought up last, in last night's meeting.
But the budget process is still open, so before we finish, we can, can, can we allocate that money as a city council in the budget?
It is allocated.
But it's not in the budget.
Well, there's a lot of stuff not in the budget.
Well, it's in, it's in the general budget, which you have to look for, but it's not in the particular budget for the parks and...
I was under the impression it's not anywhere in this budget.
It is not in that budget.
At, at all?
No, because when the money comes in, it just gets set aside.
So, it's in a separate...
I'll find out and see if I can figure out how it gets spent, but it's, it should be set in a separate fund for, say, parks and rec use or something.
But wouldn't we show that somewhere in this budget, so we have some control as to knowing where the, where the money is?
So, it's in a separate bank account?
It, pretty much, yes.
But I mean, regardless of what account it's in, it's, it's incoming to the city.
But when you, when you segregate it out, it's now outside of the general fund. So, you know, in here, you have the general fund, you have water sewer. So, these, what they call special revenue funds are separate and distinct from the general fund.
I just, I mean, my concern is, maybe I'll hear, we were talking about cutting the fireworks down, and there was a question and concern about shifting the date from June, from July 3rd to an alternate date to, and possible, possible losing that date for fireworks. And yet, we have this money in the account to pay for the fireworks for the next four years plus.
Well, there is money in there to be used until there's no money left. If you give me a sec, I've got the lease up, I'll see if I can find what it says.
Because we had this discussion last year during the council, during the budget.
Since we're on the, the subject of recreation, I noticed that the program expenses, did that get reallocated or renamed to something else? Is Diane still?
Did what?
Would you mind, please? Sorry. We're going off the cuff.
62. The, the program, that program line item, that's kind of been in the budget but never, never been funded, that's been zeroed out. So, in that place is Winterfest, on Winterfest account?
Mm-hmm.
So, programs, we, we draw from several accounts. So, the part-time staffing, that staffed the programs, recreation supplies, that we buy the supplies to, for the programs, arts and crafts, sporting equipment, and so forth.
Well, you know, I'm not, I'm not concerned where you spend the money, I'm just concerned about you getting the money more than anything else.
For the goal point?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, what you do with it, I can't tell you what and how to do it. I can't tell you how to spend the money or where to spend the money, but I just think that that money was set aside for, for that department. And here we are now with 67,000, and we're talking about cutting a line item or decreasing a line item for 15,000 to less because of, you know, for budgetary reasons. And, and yet, we have that plus in your budget.
Yeah, I didn't know it was, you know, it was not high. Pretty good.
That's, that's all I want to say.
Yeah. So, I guess that, that program expenses, I mean, if, that's what the rec's for, is to provide programs for all age groups, from our young kids to our senior citizens, and, you know, trying to pull nickel and dime from other line items so that you can provide the nice calendar of events that you do, doesn't make any sense, again, when we have revenue that's designated specifically for your department to provide that continuing...
And, and also, too, I'm with the understanding that it was to help rehab fields, you know, field rehabilitation, the softball and baseball fields.
So, what are all these funds accounted for, if not in the budget, right? I mean, we're talking about another fund that's specifically for recreation, it sounds like, right? I mean, I, I didn't see any of these in here.
No, it's not in there. You just said it's not in there.
What other funds are out there? I mean, that's, I mean, that would be key to the decision, you know, Diana, how long did we haggle last night over a 15,000 line? When you could have just said, dude, I got it, man, just leave me alone.
There's, I have a printout here, which was provided today by Malcolm. There's a recreation fund generated revenues of 138, am I correct, Malcolm? This is estimated for year-end.
Yes.
Last year, year-to-date, was the generated in recreation 115,000.
I believe that...
Everyone have a copy of this?
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now.
But that's in the budget?
Yes.
That goes into the general fund, I'm assuming, right?
Yes.
When we make our final decision, I mean, we can, we can go into it further.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. We'll move right along to the next department, which is finance, page 29, section 260. This is the finance department, page 29, section 260.
I only have two questions on this. One, it's the tuition reimbursement, and the next line down, again, the purchase of professional services.
The, well, let me start off with an item that you're probably going to get to, is the salary.
No, I have no questions, so.
I don't.
Go ahead.
Well, the tuition is more of a contractual, if the employee wants to take a course or two, and they're allowed to take, I think, one course per semester, or is it two per semester, I'm not sure. And an employee has requested and is working with H R to get that, and so that's why that was in. That was in a couple of years ago, and so that's what the tuition is for. That was the number we put in. I, I don't have a number on exactly what that'll be. And the purchase professional, there were two line items. One was the audit, which has now been moved to the city council's budget, and, which was 32,000 approximately. And then there was another independent, oh, do I have it up there?
I think that line item should be put down to 7,500, the professional purchasing service?
Yes. And, because there were two...
Which line item, Councilman?
So, the line item, 53,000, professional, purchase professional services, the council, when going over and discussing auditing and the cost of that, we transitioned that amount to our council budget, effectively leaving that line item at 7,500.
And I've got that in. When the council made those two changes, so when I added it to the council, I took it out of, one was general government and one was the finance department.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's in my, my notes over here, council changes.
And that left it for, that left it for the water audit, I believe, the 7,500 covered the water order.
There was a couple of other ones, we've got...
Waste water.
Yeah, we have one for O P E B, and we've got one for, I think it was, it was wastewater.
Right, wastewater, mhm.
Right, right. Um... I do want to say, the library hit, when they came up here and said, you know, how they compared to 2011, I, I think I'll do the same.
Okay.
You're going to invoke that?
Yeah, yeah. I'm going to go there.
Everybody's taking notes for mother departments.
So, I had done, I got here in '12, so I went back to '11, and I looked at the F T E count and compared '11 to what's proposed in '20. And, and in finance, you know, I had, originally, there was the finance director that had a division, you had assessment, collecting, purchasing, and there was also, the system was so old, I had to have like a data, a data processing person, I don't know what you call it. I could not get any reports out myself. So, any report you needed, you had to go to this tech person. And so, in, in F Y 11, I had 19 F T Es, and the total salaries were 982,000. Now, currently, we, we added a 16th, we went to 15, we did add the receptionist in to tax collection, so if you include that, we now have 16, and the F T, the salaries are 904,000. So, for my three or four divisions, the salary now is 904 versus 982 back in 2011. And one, we were, I worked with the mayor in the assessment department, where we have reduced one of the assistant assessors, we also reduced the M I S person, we took the purchasing agent out, and then one or two people out of tax collection. And, you know, as we automate, I believe that, you know, you can do more with less because before, everything was all manual.
Firm believer. I'm a firm believer in that, by the way.
You know, on the flip side of that, you may have to add more to I T, but, you know...
I don't know about it. So, Malcolm, I'm a little, I think you lost me, because initially, you were starting to talk about yours, your, the finance, and then you went into all of the different finance departments. So, are you saying that you look, you're across the board in each of the finance departments? You're cutting positions?
Or have over the, the past, since I got here.
Oh.
But in this one, I think we've got one less in assessment, we took, you know, so...
And the tax assessment, you're saying? You have one less?
Yeah, we'll get to there. We've got those three or four.
Yeah, okay. That's what I think I was getting confused.
So, Councilman, did that answer those two?
The postage is, what are you guys, what's postage for in the finance? I mean, I understand what it'd be in tax and...
We have to buy all the check stock and all the, I, I was wondering why we use so much paper, but we do 6,000 purchase orders, and, you know, each one of those has four or five pieces of paper, you've got all the check stock.
So, is that under general office expenses or postage?
Under, sorry, under general office is all of the, the paper products. The postage is just in the, the mailing. We have to mail 6,000 checks or, if you're mailing, we, we have 6,000 purchase orders, I don't know how many checks, but if you think about...
I see what you mean. So, services rendered by the city that were...
Yeah, for the postage, because we, we send out, you know, 100 checks a, a week or something like that.
Okay. I don't have any further questions.
Did you want to go back to your salary line?
I have that number for you.
Okay. And again, just keeping consistent with...
3,000.
733-780.
All right.
I gave up.
You can reduce to 733-780 with the 32,000, move to the council budget, auditing.
Oh, no, I was talking about the salary line.
Specifically mine.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, 3,210.
That's what I show.
Yes.
So, that's a reduction on that line?
Yep.
3,210 even.
Three thousand, two hundred and ten even.
So, there was that, and then the thirty-two, one seventy-five, which was the audit, which was transferred to the city council.
And remind me one more time, that contract runs, this is the second of three years, yes?
Yes, and that should be done.
It's their second term.
Right, and the next one, the third year starts in November.
So, they are, the scope of their contract is to complete the FY nineteen audit, and then.
And then we go out again.
We go out again.
Yes, that is correct.
And when is the next time they're available to, where the bid on?
When is the next time they are available? Do they sit out?
No, they, they're allowed, this is their first three years.
Oh, first of three. I thought it was their final of three.
I thought it was two.
Well, it, I'm sorry. They gave us a three-year contract.
Right.
And so, we always go out for three. So, this is the first three years. We, they can bid on the next one.
Okay.
And normally, it's three years, but they could only get it for two because we have a city charter.
I got you.
That says that we have to change auditors every five years.
Mm-hmm.
So, we'll go out probably April, approximately.
So, Mr. President, what I'd like to recommend is when it comes time for that, maybe we do a workshop with the purchasing agent, with Malcolm, try to kind of get our hands around what the requirements might be, so, you know, we feed into that RFP and how it goes through the.
And we can, we'll have to talk, the auditor general's office is usually very specific. So, we will have to add, say, you know, can we add anything to the scope of work that you may want?
Completely fair. Completely fair.
Have to give them a summary after that meeting.
Yeah, I think I'm more concerned about the presentation and the timing and understanding, you know, the points that Malcolm's raised. There may not be a whole lot we can do about the timing, but maybe there's something we can do to encourage it.
Okay. Are you got any other further questions?
Just the total line item, the total for that department with the changes, please.
It's seven-three-oh-five-seven-oh.
Thank you.
That concludes this section, and I think that concludes, if I'm not mistaken. No, we got.
With tax.
Tax collection.
Oh, we.
Tax assessment.
Thirty-one.
To the next page.
I'll call. Thirty-one, hold on.
Page thirty-one.
Tax collection. Okay.
And in here, there were, we'd moved payroll out, and we moved ADP out, so those are transfers.
So, how many FTEs do you have currently in that department for the upcoming year?
I think we have, oh, so, we moved, also, there was another position in there which was removed. We had a position that was put there for about a year, and that position moved to the clerk's office, so we, I forget what it was called last year, it was called tax collection specialist. And so, those two positions were moved to other ones and removed out of here, but then there's one, if you look at the other one, that's the receptionist position.
The one that's currently, that says other, that's vacant?
Yes. Yes.
So, that's a receptionist?
Yes.
That we're, you're looking to fill?
Yes. And that was under the manager's, then mayor's budget, and it was moved under tax collection, you know, when, and this person is the one that sits out in front, and when they have free time.
Oh, right here, the entrance?
Yes.
Okay, so that, I was gonna say, who's receptionist issue in that department? Okay, so it's the outside in the main for you?
Yes.
And has that step been filled?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. So, is the account maintenance clerk payroll backup, is that different than the one that's currently up in HR?
That is true. When, the, there was five, there really should be one, two, three, five people in tax collection. And so, what happened is you had two account mates, account maintenance clerks, and then one became vacant, and they said, oh, well, we'll make that, give them a little more duties and have them be slash payroll backup. Though, they, I don't think they've done a whole bunch of the payroll backup as far as the training and all. But then payroll got moved up to HR, so that was a separate person. If you looked at last year's budget, you would see there was a payroll person and a account maintenance clerk. And the account maintenance clerk slash payroll backup does ninety-five percent the same work that the account maintenance clerk does.
So, what's the total number of employees in tax collection? Is it five or six?
It, it's, there's five in there plus the one out front.
She gets budgeted into your?
Yes.
Okay. Because she rotates in depending on the need?
Yeah, I don't know if they rotate in, but I think what happens is that, you know, when they're out there and they have free time, they may open up the mail or help out with tax collection. They help out, they, I think the former person used to help out in the engineering department or building department also because that's where they'd come from.
Or when the lines for, you know, paying your taxes or your water bill are up to the clerk's office, that person would go down into the tax office and assist with that. So, on this, in the tax collection, I see line fifty-seven, thirty-one-one, technology software, you have ten thousand dollars, but in the capital budget, I also see in a couple of different places for technology software or new programs. So, what would this be in addition to that?
That's the, I believe, the vision software, and it's an annual maintenance, though in the, in the, in the capital, vision was written in FoxPro, which is a very old language, and they have been saying forever they're going to go to a SQL database. And again, they're going to phase out FoxPro. I believe they said that Microsoft has stopped supporting FoxPro, and that, and either way, they're going to migrate away from that. And so, we have to either upgrade or go somewhere else, so we're looking at both options.
How old is that program? So, it hasn't been updated in the last several years?
No, they updated, but FoxPro is, that was before you had.
Before Oracle?
Yeah, but I'm thinking Access.
Oh.
And then you moved to Access, which is a smaller database. Then you go to SQL or Oracle, which are very big databases. And so, it was written in a, in a smaller language, if that makes sense, and in the databases, there'll be relational databases, so you have a bunch of smaller tables that are linked together. So, in Excel, you have one big spreadsheet. So, when you try to do things, if you're trying to do payroll and all these complex calculations with all these different people, you need your people over here in a data set, and your taxes over here, and your formulas over here, and so it was written in a more simplistic language, I guess you'd say. And they continually update that, but there's limitations to it. And, and, you know, as they've grown, they're like, we, we've been telling them, you've got, you've got to migrate, and they're finally doing that.
Yeah, most of this stuff like this would be very difficult to do with an old DBMS like that.
So, you're not really sure, you're not really sure what program in tax collection, what kind of software you're looking?
Originally, I was thinking, oh, we would upgrade, and then I said, well, and talking to the new tax assessor and all, that when you go to your meetings, talk and see if there's something else out there. I mean, it makes sense to, if you're going to upgrade, get something that, you know, is the latest and greatest, obviously depending on cost. So, when we do this, originally, I was geared more towards maybe just upgrading with who we have, but I think we're going to go out to like an RFP, and, just like we were with the accounting software.
So, is this an annual expense in addition to purchasing the software?
Yes, all of the, all of the softwares you used to have, whether it was building or city clerk or tax collection assessment, accounting, you would buy it, and, but then there's annual support.
Right.
So, you would pay twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year for support, and with that, you know, if you had problems or you'd get annual upgrades or periodic upgrades. Now, as we go more towards cloud-based, you'll have SaaS, services, a system where you don't own it anymore, you, you more or less lease it, because the software doesn't reside on your servers, it's cloud-based.
But you could retrieve it?
Yes, oh, yeah, and it's.
Is that a cost savings to have it in the cloud?
It's like leasing a car.
So, you're always paying for it, but it's never yours?
Yes.
So, then no.
And in the long run, well, it depends on, it depends, yeah.
Right, if they're upgrading, then you would initially get the upgrade, too?
And a lot of times with the software, you'll get, they'll say, oh, well, we're going to give you the update. Oh, no, we have a new, it's now a new version, so you've got to pay to go to that. Where this one is, you're going to pay X amount, and you'll always get the latest and greatest, and so.
So, that would be the benefit of it?
Yes, and.
Leasing.
Well, yes, and it wouldn't reside on our servers, so it would be a benefit to IT because they wouldn't have to worry about backup and making sure.
But if you ever wanted to get opt out of that contract, how do you do that? Will they hold the data hostage and you'll never be able to opt out of that contract? How would that work?
No, no, you would. And again, we haven't gone to one of those, but you would, you would be able to get your data. I'm not sure how they would give it to you. I know that when we left admins, we kind of got a big data dump. You know, it's not pretty, but I can get to a lot of, like, ten years of old data. But like you said, that would be a concern, but like everything else, you would, you would go out to RFP, and you would just sever ties, and you would have to get a backup somehow of your data. But I'm sure that would be built into the contract. Obviously, you would need an exit strategy.
I have another question, Malcolm. Purchased professional service, thirty thousand dollars, what are we using that for?
Let me double-check on that, but I believe that that is, we have for collections for motor vehicle, motor vehicle intangibles, so anytime it gets so old, we'll turn it over to a legal firm in a way that does the collections.
Is that kind of like when you go in for tax sale, the attorney, that whole process?
Yes, and it's very similar, except it's not quite as formal, but they send letters out, they'll go to court, they'll set up payment plans, and for that, we give them, I don't know, I want to say seventy-five percent of the interest. So, we get a hundred percent of the taxes that we're owed, and of the interest, we'll get twenty-five percent. And I, don't quote me, but I think that's right. And so, they don't get anything until they collect, and then they get that, that piece of the interest.
Okay.
Any other further questions from the council? Okay. We'll move right along.
Tax assessment is thirty-three.
Page thirty-three, tax assessment, section two-nine-zero, page thirty-three.
And you'll see the regular salaries went down. We had a tax assessor and two assistant assessors, and when the assistant retired, we agreed that we probably did need another full-time person. They, and we've talked about sharing a person, and we've also talked about, we left, and we'll go down to purchase professional service, that they'll need some assistance because that person did commercial, and so they'll need some help on the commercial when it comes around to that, so we're trying to figure out exactly the best way to do that. But we went from, say, six full-time people to five point three, two? I mean, so, because, you know, that person's now going to be a part-time. So, instead of making, with salaries and benefits, it was eighty or ninety, I think the total, you know, will be at twenty or thirty.
So, it's not really a part-time, it's a quarter-time?
Yes.
Quarter-time.
Well, you look at, if I'm paying somebody twenty dollars an hour and I pay them, and they're full-time, and I reduce them to ten, well, you could say it's fifty percent or half-time, but with no, with no benefits or pension, if you look at the total cost of the employee, it's significantly less.
What has in previous years that tax assessor's office been budgeted for in terms of FTEs?
They have always had six.
Six.
Somewhere, I've gone back to twenty or thirty years and done every five years or every ten years, and pretty much, they've always had six.
Last two years, they've had six.
Yes.
And so, we don't feel that they warrant the six?
And I kind of feel the same way about, I've said other, with the, with the technology and all, there's not as much need for, you know, typewriters, and so you're saving time.
So, what happens when it comes to, you know, we were in a reval year, and you have people who come and dispute, and then they have to come before the tax, and they have to do the research and all that? I believe we have like a hundred that have debated there, who are putting forward a reeval request that they're contesting.
There's a lot.
Yeah.
And normally, it goes, it really goes to the tax assessor.
Right.
Who makes the call, and generally, it's going to be denied, is general course of business, because you've got to look at, you've got the software company, unless they do a glaring error or something, but for the most part. And then from there, it would go to the board of assessment review, and that's where you would appeal it to. And so, you could, that's where you'd come in, you'd see the board, and you'd have your comps and all, and they'd have theirs, and, you know, then that's how that would progress.
But all of that, all of that has time limits, that they have to meet deadlines, so there's a hundred plus, isn't that a lot for one tax assessor to have to process all?
Well, I think that's part of that, part of the position. I think that you've got, you've got motor vehicles, which are very time-consuming, and it was sort of split between the assessor and the two assistants. One did commercial, one did motor vehicles, and one did, like, personal prop, or residential.
Right, so now we just have one assistant. Were they a deputy assessor?
Instead of a deputy, they were called assistant.
Assistant.
So, there were two, there was almost like two deputies, to make it simpler. Instead of calling them assistant tax assessors, they were kind of like two deputies.
Mm-hmm.
But they were, when I spoke to the assistant and the new tax assessor, they're like, but we, we really need that one person for X amount of time. And I said, well, and she's trying to look at some of the revolve companies to see if we can contract out with somebody, and we've got a little money left in the current budget, and with this twenty thousand, we've gotten purchase professional, we think that may be enough.
But why would we, why would we farm out if we, like other departments, have a part-time person? Why wouldn't we just keep a part-time person in-house instead of having somebody who's here a quarter of the time doing it?
You're looking for very specific expertise as far as assessing commercial property. And normally, when we hire assessors or a lot of the applicants, they come because they've got an assessment background. So, you have all of these companies that bid on our revales and all, and so those are the people that have all of the experience with the properties and valuations, and they're the ones that normally come in as either your assistant, they come in as your deputies or your tax assessor. And so, that's where the expertise, and so, pretty much, they all come from the revolve companies. So, either you find somebody that's retired maybe, or you get somebody from the revolve company, and, and a lot of times, they're very busy during, as of twelve-thirty-one, you have to, that's when you start certifying your tax rolls. have to, that's when you start certifying your tax rolls, and you've got to certify within X amount of months. And so that's when all the data comes in. So you're really busy for that third of the year, and then it slows down. And so that's when I think you need the person most. So it would make more sense to put more money in the first, that four- or five-month period, and less. So if we could find a part-time person that we could work like that, that would work fine for me. You know, it's a matter of, I've kind of talked to the assessor and said, look, you know, what's going to work? Can we do this or that? And she was the one that recommended about reaching out to the reval companies.
Okay.
But that was the logic behind that.
Thank you for that.
Any other further questions for us? Finance director? This is the end of the finance section. This is the end of the finance.
I just want to finish with two points. I just want to make sure I'm clear on this question, because I get asked a lot, I think we all do, about, are we getting residuals? Are we seeing benefits from programs like Live Nation, Kettle Point, other developments? So I can say that with Live Nation, and the deal that we have with them, to date, we have sixty-seven thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars.
Yes.
That's total from start to date.
Yes.
We haven't used that. It's not in this budget, but it's in the, it's in the city account for parks and-
In the cyber account.
It's under a mattress here, somewhere in City Hall, but it's for Parks and Recreation.
Yes, it was a dollar per ticket, then it went to a dollar-ten, and a dollar-twenty for the three-year period.
So a dollar, a dollar-twenty now, per ticket. So if we did the math, we could almost see how many people have come.
Yes.
Because I get asked that also. Are there any other accounts in the city similar to this? I'm just asking out of curiosity, I'm not being pointed, but are there any other sources of revenue that might be in an account other than this budget?
Yes. And just under, like, we have one that was in the same sort of thing, it was for fireworks. And we've got Winterfest, Bull Point, Kurt, Concert venue, we've got money set aside for the streetlights. A couple of years ago, the manager had said that we're, sort of like Johnston, we're not going to pay for the streetlights on state roads. So we've been segregating that money on a monthly basis, and putting it aside to see how this all plays out.
What, is a rough idea, total monies we're talking, all those accounts?
Well, not a lot.
How much is in Winterfest?
Six thousand dollars.
Because that's being carried by, if I'm not mistaken, an erect department.
Six thousand in Winterfest or total?
In Winterfest.
Winterfest.
So what happens is, they spend money, and what should happen is, there's, originally, they were supposed to raise enough money to cover that. And so what we do is, the money comes in, and then what we try to do is bring it in to cover the expense.
And what was the firework thing you mentioned?
And again, I think they do a little fundraising in here. I'm looking at, so on seven-sixteen, the money came in, it was two-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars for vendor fees. And then we got another four-hundred dollars for somebody that was paying us twenty-five percent of their fees. So this is about twenty-six-hundred dollars that, that's sort of a deposit.
So the vendors that are there, the July third, are there, those are vendor fees? Okay.
Yes, yes.
And the last one you mentioned was, I don't know, you said there was three?
I thought.
Bull or something?
Bull Point Park was the other one.
That's the Live Nation?
Yes, sorry, Live Nation, yes.
So Recreation is carrying a line item for sixty-one-hundred dollars, and they have an account, is an account for six thousand dollars? No, I'm sorry, Winterfest.
Winterfest.
Yes.
It's carrying a line item for Winterfest, for six. If the mayor wants to say something.
I'm not sure if, I know, Malcolm, you had mentioned something in the past, that there are certain organizations that are volunteer organizations, and sometimes they work with the city, and they raise money, and then they end up depositing it with us. Is that part of that or not? Because I know there's, like, the Dolly Searls, there's an account for that, and there's other entities.
That's completely separate. And that's, you know, this is all within the general fund. Like, Dolly Searls, it's a separate fund, and they do the fundraising, they put on the golf tournament, they, you know, but it kind of runs through us, but that's completely separate.
Are there any other accounts that would have that type of-
Yeah.
-fundraised money that gets put into our, for us to hold?
You've got capital money out there, you've got permanent money, which is, like, somebody, you know, Dolly Searls is one, somebody who'll be quest money that sits there for hundreds of years, or-
But like, Dolly Searl, now, they give a scholarship or something, so it's not money that comes to the city, per se, but these other funds do, like, Live Nation, that sixty-seven thousand dollars is for Parks and Recreation only?
Yes.
Okay, and the other money, Winterfest is, I guess, for Winterfest, I know they have expenses and do a nice job there, and, but like, Dolly Searl, or Towny Athletics, they, you know, there are events in the city, but those monies are usually scholarship and going to support charities or something. So I'm not too concerned, you know, about those, but-
You know, there are-
I'm thinking that, couldn't this money be showing our budget, like, the Live Nation money? It's revenue, it's-
Well, the-
Accessible.
It's something accessible.
We have-
What would the auditors say about that? Have they, do they have to check that?
Yeah, that's part of it. They check the balance sheet to make sure the numbers are. You get into the question of, if we have money in our fund balance, it doesn't show anywhere. It's all the money in our savings account. And so that doesn't show in here. You know, it's sort of like, we're supposed to have ten percent of the budget, and let's just say the budget's a hundred-and-fifty million. So I'm supposed to have fifteen million that's just cash that's sitting there for emergencies.
Through the chair.
You can see that in the budget, because the budget talks about-
Malcolm, can you just bring your mic closer?
Oh, okay.
I'm having a hard time. Just bring it closer to you, so you can-
The budget really speaks to the expenses we think we're going to incur, and the revenues we're going to generate in the next twelve months. And hopefully, over periods of time, you've put money away into your savings account, which is that, say, fifteen million dollars. And it sits there, and per the charter, there's certain requirements that you can access it. But, you know, it's fifteen million dollars, and so you're like, well, that's a lot of money, but, you know, it never shows up in the budget. Well, because you're not going to spend it in this year.
It's an emergency.
Right.
So before Mr.- I think you're asking, just so you could-
Yeah, I just want to know.
There.
On a lighter moment, before Mr. Fazi always speaks, I was going to suggest, do you think this would work with my wife? I told her, there's money, but it's not in the checking account. No, your wife either, no.
If I could just shed a little quick light, and what Malcolm says is all absolutely correct. And this is, the reason why it's like this, is governments follow a thing called fund accounting, fund, F-U-N-D. And it's specific to governments and not-for-profits, where it was designed this way, and it seems frustrating to people who don't account for this, is that the revenues have to be used for very specific purposes. That's why it's segregated. It's not commingled in-
Well, it's earmarked.
Yeah, earmarked, and that's on purpose. And I've seen it a lot in, you know, folks who don't deal with government accounting a lot, it struggles. Well, why don't we see it in the general fund budget? It's set aside specifically because it was intended to be used for a specific purpose, but you should be aware that it's available, and it can be used and directed. But in Malcolm's defense, in the city's defense, I've seen this conversation countless times at local government levels, because it's a difficult concept for a lot of people, if they haven't been familiar with it.
No, and I hear you, and the money is earmarked, however, here we are, you know, about to cut a line item in half, or even more, perhaps, and there's no discussion of, hey, you know?
That's a good point, yeah, that's a good point.
We've got another action, by the way, we've got a-
And when you get to your audit meeting, and, you know, and one of the things I've spoken to other councilmen in the past, the budget's exciting, the audit is really where the action is, because that tells you everything. It's, you know, this is just, this is, this is like the preliminaries.
The frosting.
The audit is really, you should spend this much time on the audit.
I want to see the filling.
And you will get all of the answers you want, because all of this is in the audit. The problem is, the presentation in the audit lasts maybe twenty minutes, no one really gets into it, but the audit is really the World Series of government. This is just, this is like spring training.
Yeah.
So on that note, we're going to take another five minutes, and reconvene.
I would, if I could, debt service, because that's relatively straightforward, those are the bonds, and then go to general government.
Debt service and capital?
Then general government, and then capital.
Forty-one.
Thank you. It would be the forty-one, and then we'll go to, then we'll go to thirty-nine.
All right, we're going to proceed right on to page forty-one, section nine-zero-five, page forty-one, nine-zero-five, debt services.
And so you'll see listed all the bonds that the general fund currently pays, the year it started, what it's for. I think Councilman Kahoon had asked about tan-
Your mic, though?
Oh, I just wasn't talking and doing it.
Okay.
About tan interest. And last year, it was a hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars for tan interest, borrowing seventeen million. We've got two-hundred budgeted, that may be a little low, it just depends on how much we're going to borrow, if we stay at the seventeen. But as we spend some of this capital money, then my cash will be depleted, so I may end up borrowing more. The main one I want to talk about in here is the five-eight, five-one-eight, the two-thousand-seventeen TIF bond, tax increment financing down at Kettle Point. And that's a unique type of bond, and to be, to put it in, I guess, the way we can understand, is that if I'm a developer, and I want to come in, and I'm going to put a building on this site, but it's kind of raw land, and the city's going to put in the infrastructure, well, I'm going to say, well, I want you to put the infrastructure in, and then I'll come in. And you're going to say, oh, no, no, you go ahead and sign the lease and agree to do this, and I'll put the infrastructure in. So there's a trust issue, you know, to make sure that we both do what we want to. So we set up a tax increment finance, where we both sign this document that we guarantee that we're going to do what we're supposed to. And then what happens is, that the tax that's generated will pay for the bonds, and that the plan would be that you would collect more taxes than the bond, and it, you know, and so you'll be generating revenue. Now, we talked to bond counsel, and what we're trying to do is that, that's shown here, and this is the first time it's shown here, because this is the first time we've had to actually have debt service payments. But we're probably, because we think that in the bond covenants, that we should take this money, and again, put it aside into a separate fund, so that we, because they're very specific over coverages, so that we have to generate enough to cover the bond, and you've got to make sure there's enough there projected out, because if that, those parcels don't generate enough revenue, then you'd have to have a special assessment. So just like the water and sewer fund are a special revenue fund, or a separate fund, we're going to take these parcels and separate it so that we can track it better. And so it won't, it'll still be a debt service, it just won't show up in the general fund, it'll probably show up in more of like a special revenue.
So Malcolm, what are the first, one, two, three, four, five bonds?
Ryback?
Yes.
Which are school bonds.
Okay.
And, and so we'll get school housing aid on those, and you have to go through Ryback if, we'll get fifty-four percent, but you've got to go through Ryback if you want to get the fifty-four percent on interest. So almost any school bond you do goes through, to roll out the Housing Economic Commission.
So all those bonds go back years, and they predate the Budget Commission for a bunch of work that, you know, has-
High school.
Yeah. And a lot of it was high school, but, you know, like-
You know, like, you heard about the doors project forever, that was one of them.
All of it, yeah.
Right, and so there was a lot of various school projects. The, if you look at fifty-eight, five-twelve, the Q-SAB subsidy is on, and I forget which bond it was, that there is going to be, what they say, loan forgiveness, that as long as the governor puts it in, we will get some of that money back, but it's not guaranteed. And some of them, if you go through Ryback, they'll have special financing available, well, they'll actually have loan forgiveness. So you borrow a million, but you only pay nine-hundred back. And there's the library share of bonds, and that's, you know, we get twenty-two percent of that back, and in an older bond, so much was allocated to the library, I think that runs out in about three or four more years.
It'll be paid in three or four years, or we're no longer able to access?
They'll be paid in full, that was a twenty-year bond that'll be running out in, I think, about three years. The State Road and Bridge Fund, now the Infrastructure Bank, we borrowed one-point-two, I believe, to do roads. The one below that, fourteen, is we refunded. What'll happen is, when you go to bond, you have interest rates, over, after ten years, a lot of times, you can, they're callable, so you'll look at them to say, hey, if my interest rate has reduced enough, I can save. So actually, when we did the two-thousand refunding, we saved a million dollars on interest over the life of those bonds. We borrowed a little bit of money for the efficient buildings, I think those were the generators, and I think we also had money in there for the streetlights, because we were going to buy the streetlights and make them energy-efficient.
So for those generators, for efficient, would you get rebates on those?
I think we got some of those, some of those we got through a grant, and I'd have to look on those.
What was the bond for?
The generators, hold it. The generators, is that the one that's here?
We got three through a grant.
The senior?
Senior.
Senior, here?
And there was a third one, I think.
Yeah, that is a grant, right?
Yeah. And I want to say, in this one, it was, it was for the streetlights, and there were a couple of other small ones in there, and I'd have to go back and see what they were.
Because the generators, if I'm not mistaken, we received twenty-five thousand dollars from Congressman, if I'm not mistaken, one of the Congressmen, and it went on the senior center, maybe Congressman Cicilline?
I believe we got three generators.
Fifty thousand dollars?
Yes, we got money for, yeah. I don't know if it covered all the generators, but I know we got grants for-
That would go on the bond?
I'll check on what the, what the, what the other piece was to that. I think there was a few hundred thousand, it was for some smaller projects.
Okay.
How much did we take the bond out for?
One-point-five, one-point-seven. You've got the, in the fifty-eight, five-one-nine, that's the money set aside that'll go into the school bond to pay for that. Currently, we've got two-point-three million set aside. Within about three years, I've got to come up with six million dollars, maybe four years, because that's what the city's obligation's going to be, is six-point-one, it looks like.
What are you projecting for the FY twenty offset for that, as far as state reimbursement goes?
None. Oh, what do you mean by?
So, so we have to pay, we have to pay for a bond, right?
Yes.
And then we get the expenditures from the school, by way of the invoices that we've been paying, so the city has to pay those. But there will be revenue on the city's side by way of reimbursement that comes- But there will be revenue on the city's side by way of reimbursement that comes in for those expenditures.
We get the 50% back?
The 54%.
For the 15 million?
Right.
Is that what you're saying?
No, the, well, the 15, so there's definitely the reimbursement for the 15 million of the upfront money, if you will. And then we know that the final rate is TBD, but the guaranteed rate is the state funding formula rate of 54%. So certainly during the course of our expenditures in FY 2020, we should be expecting something in the way of reimbursement for those expenses that we make. Why?
It's my understanding that the project has to be substantially complete. So even when we go to bond in June of '21, the project's not going to be substantially complete. So I have to wait till '22 before, it'll be July of '22 before I see any money from the state.
All right, so I need to check on that, Malcolm, and I owe you an answer. That's my go-do, okay? Can we move to the TIF, go back to the TIF for a second? So my understanding of a TIF is it works like this. Just as you mentioned, the developer comes in, the developer agrees to do whatever they're going to do there. What we do with the TIF is we set the baseline by way of assessing within the TIF area and then we back the bond that the developer takes with the agreement to pay or to provide them any of the tax revenues that are generated by way of the, you know, the reevaluation of that property over the course of that time. And as you mentioned, you have to hit specific milestones. And there's a term for the TIF. Usually they're like long-term, like 20 years, 30 years.
Yeah, it's normally a bond and it's about 20 years.
Okay. So based on everything that you just said, I don't see an expenditure for us of 818,750 out of the general fund for a TIF bond.
We're talking about, and you're right, because there, on the revenue side, you would see kind of a, the revenue that comes in. Because we, we have this bond payment, but we also have assessed the values of those properties, which is going to generate tax revenue, which is going to go to pay for this. So we're going to take that piece of it, or those two pieces, and move it over into a separate fund. So we will move this out of here.
So this should be reduced from this line here?
Yes.
All right. And because, you know, as Bill was mentioning, you, if you have to set them up as funds so they're not co-mingles, you have to, okay. So then we are reducing the debt service line by 818,750.
That is the plan. Okay. I just want to make sure that Mr. Fazio was, we sat with the bond attorney yesterday, day before, to go over this.
Okay. So that is, that is a reduction, this all here that we're seeing in debt service, this is planned general fund expenditures.
Correct.
Yes or no? I mean, I don't know if there's any that are funky, but, okay. So then this is a reduction in the planned general fund expenditure of 818,750?
Yes.
And I can't do the math anymore, it's fairly simple math, but.
Hang on, now. Can I just?
Please, sir.
See, that's one thing, you're right, Councilman, that we are in discussions with the city's bond attorney to correctly account for the TIF revenue and expenditure and most likely it will be transferred all to a separate, special revenue fund. So you can reduce this line, you know, we should, we'll have final determination, I think, in a couple of days, well in time for you to make your final budget decision. But there should be also corresponding transfer of revenue related to the TIF revenue that'll support this payment that may or may not be included in Malcolm's property tax assumptions. So that's something, it's going to offset, it's not going to result in.
It's not a straight reduction.
Exactly. But it's, yeah, and actually, the TIF is, we had a report on the TIF to the Waterfront Commission in August and I'm happy to share it with the council. I had provided it to Malcolm. The TIF is revenue positive, there's more revenue coming in to pay for the TIF by a large margin. The city's realizing a net benefit from the TIF, not just in property taxes, but the tangible taxes, the motor vehicle taxes, and just the general economic activity that's taking place in the TIF area. So I could provide that report to the councils, they'd see that. But you're correct, it most likely isn't a general fund expense, but one of these special revenues that need to be segregated out. But we're working with our bond counsel, there's a call on Monday where she's going to be speaking to some other professionals to, who was the trustee of the funds, is US Bank, explaining how, there's a payment coming up on November 15th, we want to ensure that the money's in the right place to make that payment.
Okay, that makes sense. So my understanding though is, I mean, TIFs are all different depending on the terms of the particular agreement. And I know that some of them are structured so that, you know, the city will realize some of the benefit from the increase over that term, but, you know, largely it goes to back the bond. Is that the case in this particular one or?
Yeah, you know, and again, we had a TIF 101 session with the Waterfront Commission in June, I'm happy to relay that as well. But in this case, the way that this TIF was constructed, only 70% of the taxes realized in that district go to the bond, 30% will go to the city. And we're just talking about property taxes, you know, the tangible taxes are not part of the TIF at all, that all goes to the city. And when you look at the medical facility that's at that district, obviously, you know.
Substantial.
And it's in, and every three or four years, they replace it, so it's kind of a nice gift that keeps on giving. So, but in this case, I just want to make it clear, there is no backing by the city of that bond. There are strictly limited obligations, there's no exposure to the city. If there's a shortfall in any of the property's taxes to pay the bonds, the property owners have agreed to assess themselves for any shortfall. So there's no way that the last city can make a payment if there's a shortfall in any of those bonds. That's how we structure the TIFs. It's a very secure way to do it and we have independent financial analysis that works on our behalf, the Waterfront Commission and the city, to verify those forecasts. So we're, you know, the TIFs are in other parts of the state, country, are actually general obligation bonds where the city does put its full faith and credit behind it. In other states, we don't do that here at all, it's the complete opposite, there's no recourse.
Okay. Thank you. So that line goes to?
Zero.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, the overall debt service line of nine oh five.
Six oh four nine eight four one.
Sounds right. All right, thank you.
Moving right along, Malcolm?
Yes.
Okay. We'll go now to page.
I just have one question. Are there any stipulations in paying off some of these bonds sooner? So for example, the library shared bond has three years left. With any surplus, would be able to pay down to reduce the interest payments?
I would have to talk to, to check to see if you can pay them off early. I know some of them you can, some you can't.
Right. But we don't know, you don't know offhand which one, any of the bonds that we could pay down?
No, I know normally we look at, because you're not going to pay off a $10 million balance.
Right.
But if they get down to a smaller amount and that's a piece of a bigger one, normally what we look at is if the interest rates reduce, can we refund them and save some money?
Okay.
And actually, we're going to do that, I think, in about six months or so when we do the tan. We think there's a small one we can, we can save a little bit of money on.
All right, if I, and just one more actual question or request. If I could get more information on line item 58, 51 seven, that efficiency building bond and more information on the 58, 51 five, the state road bridge revolving fund? I'd appreciate that.
Okay.
Because given the conditions of our state roads and such, it'd be interesting to see where that money is, went and what we're paying for.
Yeah, that state road bridge revolving, that was a program with the state, so we could borrow money at a reduced interest rate and I think we did three or four roads with it. So we just borrowed money to do three or four roads a few years ago.
In the city?
Yes.
Like state roads?
No. No. It was just a state program. So like we borrow from a Ryback because you get a better interest rate, we go through the infrastructure bank because you get a half a percent, a quarter percent less than the market rate. So the state sets these up so you borrow from them. They go out and do a big borrowing instead of a small one, so the economy's a scale, they can, they can pass the savings on to us.
All right, if I could just get the balances on each of the bonds and that information?
Okay.
What's left? Thank you.
Thank you. Move right along to page 39, section 900, Selenius.
The first line item is EB cap, it's the money we give them every year. Normally it's been 30,000 and the mayor's reduced to 15 for this year.
So that's an organ, nonprofit that comes to us for CBG money also?
That is correct.
So this is in addition to the CBG money?
Yes, it is.
That they call, they ask for, that we give to them?
Yes.
Okay.
The next line is health insurance for retirees. Now, in that number is also about a million dollars that we put into, just like we have to fund the pension, we have to fund what they call OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits, which are the health and dental that we've promised retirees. And just like you hear about the pension funds always being underfunded and that's becoming critical, well, the benefits with Blue Cross going up 6%, 7% a year, that's a bigger concern than the pension ones. And so we set up a trust a few years ago, we're maybe 40% funded. But, so what happens is we think that, you know, we'll have, say, 2.3 or somewhere in the low, 2 million in actual expenses and then we put the money, the extra million, into the trust. And then hopefully that'll grow to a point where, you know, we can start paying the benefits out of there. You've got dental insurance for retirees, life insurance, a little bit of unemployment. The Medicaid penalty was something that was done a number of years ago. What had happened is we had promised people healthcare for life and, you know, with healthcare being 16, 17, $20,000, it gets to be rather expensive for four or five of these people. So we brought them in and said, if we can get you to go over to Medicare, would you do that? And they said, yes. Well, if you don't sign up when you're first eligible for Medicare, there's a penalty involved. And they didn't need to sign up because they had healthcare for life. So we agreed that we would pay the penalty for them and they would go, and they would go to Medicare. So we're saving, you know, say, 20,000 a person for four or five people, you're saving, you know, $100,000 a year, but we agreed to pay this little penalty of 6,000. So it looks odd when you see it, but that's the rationale behind it.
This is a one-time fee though, right?
It's an annual fee.
It's an annual fee.
And it's slowly been reducing. I don't want to say why, but. Workers' compensation and you'll see that below it, we have a sort of a credit of 200,000. And what that's there for is when people are on workers' comp, they're not getting a pay from the city. Now, we don't know where they're going to be collecting from or what division they'll be in, but we figured there's probably 200,000 because if I'm paying workers' comp, they're not getting a check. So we wanted to show that somewhere. You know, and we could put a little bit in each division, but, you know, it just made more sense to put it here. The next line was the legal services and as you know, 75 is now 53,402. Halfway down the page, 200,000 budget.
It's what now?
Oh, sorry, I was looking, I thought.
Oh, you just said the number, 53,402.
Right, yeah. 75 of that has now been transferred to the council.
Mm-hmm.
And remember I told you there was, there was, we broke it up because there was, it called professional services, purchase professional service, and then people kept saying, well, how much was actually legal? And so we sort of broke it up into, well, we'll say some of it's legal and some of it's consulting. And the professional service is a new line item. I think they both are new line items because they were all combined one.
Professional and legal?
Yes. And then there's 25,000. If there's something you have a question, just let me know, but I'm just going down. The grant matching fees is that, you know, we need something in there, just, that's kind of a placeholder. Normally when there's a grant, there's a 10% or a dollar amount match.
I have a question.
Yes.
Just want to back up one line. Professional services, $100,000. Each, pretty much each department carries a professional services. What is this for? Looks like.
Um, oh, well.
She can't make it though, right?
Like in here right now, the biggest chunk of that is about $50,000. I can't see that. Okay, so annual open gov is 20,000. Other consulting, like, we're now paying wound socket for Mr. Lubas services, so that would come out of there, which could be, I'm looking at, you know, a $50,000 bill for that.
And he's going to be with us next year? I thought this was the final year.
Where is he?
Well, that's, that's been.
Did he go to sleep somewhere?
That's been.
No, he's hiding between the white shirts. He's trying to blend in. Mr. Lubas, are you staying with us on another year?
Holding allowance and benefits?
I don't know. But we're budgeting for it, is that what we're saying, Malcolm?
And, you know, this line item, it was, I'll go back, there was in '15, 405,000 spent, then 360,000 and 363,000.
What is this, you're reading off?
Those two positions were one line item before called professional services, so I was giving you what was spent, '15, '16, '17, '18?
Well, I just want this one right here.
Okay. And so.
Propose.
And so that was, so I was sort of a guest on my part of how much was legal and how much was consulting or other.
But don't we have a line item for legal?
No.
200,000?
Oh, yes. But originally, there was one called purchase professional service, it had like 300,000 in it. So somebody kept saying, how much do we spend on legal services? They didn't care whether we, if it was consulting, so I broke it out into, one was legal, one was consulting.
Okay. You can go on. You can go on, I'm done.
My, my only question, everything else seems pretty either standard or mandated. But back to the first thing, the EB cap. Now, we're no longer in that building and maybe our mayor's here can ask, we're out of that building, we gave them that building, right? So they own it, we don't own it. Their services are also provided to residents from other cities. They do get CDVG funding from us. I'm wondering if it's time to cut this from our budget. I appreciate that you knocked it down from 30 to 15, but maybe it's about time our obligation is, we're giving them grant funds, they have the building for free.
Well, this, the money, from what I understand from past practices, has been almost, in consideration of all the work they do in the community, we actually entered into a health equity zone agreement with them through the state, which will be bringing more programs to our residents. I decided, because they do get CDVG money and I thought the 30,000 line, it was consistent over the years, I decided to cut it in half, but it's entirely up to the council what you decide to do. I do know that Dennis Roy and EB cap do provide a lot of services to members of the community and they rely on these type of, this type of funding to provide those services.
But when we did the health equity zone, I remember that, Mr. Mayor.
But when we did the health equity zone, I remember that, Mr. Mayor, when they came and proposed it to us, I remember, there was no obligation at the time that.
No.
Entered into that agreement.
No, there's no.
We certainly didn't sign up to give them anything at that time.
We didn't. But I just want to point out that through them, we do offer the community a lot of different services and programs, which are beneficial.
Yeah, I just tossed it out there. I know through the years, they have provided a lot.
And we did.
Social services.
We did save a lot of money when we moved our rec center out of there, we were paying close to $64,000 for 1/30 utilities, I believe it was. So that's a significant savings. But like I said, I think that as a community action program, they do provide a lot of services to residents in these problems also. And the reason I came up here, I don't know if we moved off of this topic, but on the professional services and legal services line you were asking about.
I was just asking about the professional, but he gave me an answer.
You agree with that? Okay, good.
So, Councilman Rogers, I had the same feeling as it pertains to the East Bay cap. Again, we've been very generous over the years with our CBG funds, with that program, and I appreciate the work that they do, but, you know, they help us along with multiple other communities in the East Bay. I would like to suggest that we zero that line and put the $15,000 in grant matching fees, since one of the things that we're looking to do in the city is build different parts with different departments. And I know we're trying, the planning and economic department is trying to do a lot more in terms of grants, same thing with the Carousel and other departments, and so to have more grant matching funds, I think would be beneficial to the city to get even more grants, if possible.
He was actually here the last couple of nights, he was here this evening to speak to me as well, and I told him, he wanted to speak, but.
Sorry, we missed.
Told him he'll be here for the public hearing next week.
Oh, good.
Yeah, so we can keep it in mind, and let's, we'll make a final decision at some point, but I agree with you, Councilwoman, maybe as a better use. I don't know how much they get for the CDB.
It varies there, whatever they ask for. I believe we funded a nurse for that building, for them, amongst other things.
I mean, I'd like to see some of the statistics. Statistics, I don't want to see us cut, or have social services cut to families or children, if that's going to be a result of this, but I'd like to get more information on it.
Any other questions for Mr. Moore on the debt services?
No.
On the debt service? Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore. Going to move right on over to page 49, the capital.
One more thing, just quickly. I'd just like to point out that the 1% capital reserve, that has to reflect their total number when we're done, right?
Yeah, I think what I, again, it says 1%. I'd like to do it on like last year's budget, because otherwise, every time you make a small change, you keep, so that it, you know.
All right, I think that's fair.
All right, page 49, section 910, page 49, section 190, capital.
Through the chair, Mr. President?
Yes.
Just a quick question, can we just take a quick look at what we have left in the budget?
Sure.
To go over?
Mm-hmm.
Because if it's only a handful, and the capital budget being one, I mean, I understand that we still have a lot of department heads, but it is 11, past 11 o'clock, and we do have a meeting tomorrow. If this is only.
I can tell you exactly what we have left. We have law department, capital budget.
Animal shelter.
Animal shelter.
Harbor master.
Senior services. Waste water.
We did.
Waste on plumbing expense. Oh, I'm sorry. And wastewater, that's it.
We did wastewater.
At least we did wastewater with the water.
Did that yesterday. Wastewater and senior services, we did yesterday.
Okay, so we have one, two.
Which are all small ones, actually.
Yeah, harbor master.
The, this capital improvement, this also ties into the, all the other projects, right? In the middle of the, we also have to finish fire.
So do you want to proceed with capital at this point in time? See how long it's going to take, if it takes us over 20 minutes, we just continue tomorrow? We can put a cutoff?
We have to come back tomorrow anyway, and we're not going to get to it all tonight.
No.
So you want to just, is that the pleasure of the council?
I recommend starting this tomorrow, it's going to be an extensive one.
I think that's right.
Is that what the council's wishing at this point in time? So it looks like we'll reconvene tomorrow.
Make a motion to continue where we left off tomorrow.
Remembered. A second. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, we convene tomorrow at 7:00 PM.
7:00 AM.